To the Charlotte City Council Business Meeting for February 8th. I hope everyone's getting ready for recovery, or actually, everyone has recovered from the Super Bowl last night. I expect it was a shock to several, but it was entertaining, at least for the first hour and a half, anyway. So, I want to call the Charlotte City Council meeting to order and welcome all of our residents who are watching it. Our meeting tonight is a virtual meeting in accordance with all the electronic meeting statutes and requirements being met. You're able to view this, I hope, that you'll stay with us through the government channel, the city's Facebook page, and the city's YouTube page. And I'd like to have first the introductions of the council members, and then follow that with the introductions of the staff that joins us to make these meetings work. So, I am Vi Lyles, and I serve as mayor, and we'll continue from that point on.
Good afternoon. Julie Isle, Mayor Protem, and serving at large.
Rexton Winston, at large.
Greg Phipps, at large.
I don't know if Ms. Ashmira's on yet.
Mr. Eggleston, why don't you go ahead?
All right. Larkin Eggleston, District 1.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Renee Johnson, District 4.
Matt Newton, District 5.
Happy Monday. Tarek Bakari, District 6.
Good evening. Ed Driggs, District 7.
So, as Ms. Ashmira and Ms. Watlington join us, we'll go ahead and notify the clerk of the time that they come, and so I think that we'll go ahead and continue. We begin our meeting with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is by a council member, and is intended for us, who desperately need it sometimes. And we will have that tonight by Councilmember Eggleston, who will give us some expression of inspiration, and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which Mr. Graham will recite for us tonight. All right? Mr. Eggleston?
Mine will be short and sweet tonight, just a thought for all of us, as we do the work of people, from one of our country's greatest philosophers. It's very dramatic when two people come together to work something out. It's easy to take a gun and annihilate your opposition, but what is really exciting to me is to see people with different views come together and finally respect each other. And that comes from the great philosopher, Mr. Rogers.
That's true. He is a great philosopher. All right? Would you please stand, if you're in the room where we are, and on site? And Mr. Graham, will you lead us?
I will. My congratulations, so alike, of the United States of America, two republics, four with the same, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Today, we're in the first section of our meeting. We've allocated extra time for two reasons. One, we have several items that we're going to go into closed session, and we're going to do that first. Immediately following the closed session, we'll have the city manager give us an overview, follow up on the questions for the... In fact, Mr. Jones, would you mind if we do the questions for the agenda, so in case the staff needs to do any extra work that they can?
That's great, Mayor.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Harris to come in and talk to us about any questions that were called in, if she's ready, and any questions from the floor. So, I will tell you that the staff has asked for a deferral of item number 37 until February the 22nd. And is there any other thing, any other item on the consent agenda, that council members would like to ask for comment or separate vote? Mr. Winston?
I had just asked for, to give a comment on item number 23.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Anyone else? All right? I tell you what, Ms. Harris wasn't expecting me to do that. What do they call it? When you'd mute change something on a game or something? Anyway, audible. Thank you, Ms... Thank you. I appreciate that. I called an audible. So, let's go ahead and go into the motion. Mr. Baker, would you please read the motion for the closed session, and we'll come back to questions on consent as soon as the closed session is over. Mr. Baker?
Certainly. I will... I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-31811A3, to consult with the city attorney, in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the city council in the matters of Deering versus City of Charlotte, Wright versus City of Charlotte, Wright versus City of Charlotte, and DeDeles versus City of Charlotte.
All right. Do I have a motion, please?
Show move.
Mr. Phipps?
Mr. Driggs?
So, we have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Driggs?
And so, I'll begin. We lead off today with Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Watlington? So, that's... Okay. Mayor Protem? Ms. Ashmira? Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
So, those that are present, all approve that motion. So, we're going to let Ms. Jackson define how we do the closed session for everyone.
Sure. Council, you have a secondary link to your closed session. It began at 4:15, so you can just click on the 4:15 link to go into closed session.
[625.14]
I recognize the city manager for the action items that we're going to review prior to our meeting. All right, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council tonight. For the action briefing, we have two presentation slash council discussions. One is the transformational mobility network update, and the other one is the source of income discrimination. The first item has been discussed at certain levels in our transportation and planning and environment committee, as well as the source of income discrimination has been discussed at some level at the great neighborhoods committee. So, Mayor, that's what we have. We've already had the closed session, so if it's what the council would like to do, we can go right into those.
Go right into the transformational mobility network update.
Okay. Well, before I turn it over to Taiwo, I just wanted to do a little bit of a level setting with the council. We received this at the end of your annual strategy meeting, and so what we've been doing as a team has been, we've been reaching out to the towns, having discussions internally, briefing you also. But this is the first time, I think, since the annual strategy meeting that we have the opportunity to look at this from multiple levels. And I will say, this is a complex and a complicated task that we have before us, and we will be thorough in our assessment and our analysis. There are legal ramifications, there are also financial ramifications, as well as having a better understanding of the projects that's associated with this. So, I'll turn it over to Tai. I just wanted to make sure, as we talk about this, there are discussions about the silver line, but I can assure you, this is not one single project. It is a multitude of projects, both from a transportation and from a transit standpoint, and we are at the beginning stages of doing our assessment. So, Tai?
Thank you, my manager Jones. Good afternoon, everyone. So, this is going to be a tag-team effort. There will have a number of us that will be sharing with you tonight. What we'll be presenting to you tonight is largely new information that will cover going from the legislative outlook and funding strategy. We talked to you earlier about bringing a refined funding strategy to you by April, but we want to show you the beginnings of that. And then, Dana will talk about the legislative. Kelly Flannery, our CFO, will talk about funding. Then Liz Babson will talk about the projects and how we want to engage you. Then I will wrap it up with our recent polling data. So, Dana, if you will step up and just kind of walk council through this, and then hand off to Kelly, and then from Kelly to Liz and back to myself. Thank you.
I'll be reviewing the legislative schedule with you this evening. As you know, over the past several weeks, we have presented the transformational mobility network to key points to elected officials locally, regionally, and at the state. While there's still a lot more work to be done, we want to provide some clarity on the timeline that allows us to preserve the option for a November 2021 referendum, as well as identify key milestones along the way. The timeline also presents opportunities for you to get involved in the program. Perhaps the most important part of the work is what we do in this month of February. This will result in how we progress further in this journey. Based on our ongoing conversations with you, our partners, and delegation, we'll return to you at the end of the month with an assessment as to whether or not to move forward with a 2021 referendum. While this process is ongoing, we will continue to develop funding scenarios, generate project lists, and produce statistically relevant polling data. As for the slide that's in front of you, this provides a snapshot of what the process is. It's not an all-inclusive chart, but we have the major points on there. For example, this month, actually pre-March column, we've been working on securing support for the plan, especially with the county and towns. We're also in the process of drafting legislation for this effort. We still have a lot more work to do, especially working on carve-outs with the towns and the county and things like that. So, we're nowhere near close, but certainly we have a framework in place. And then we'll return to council at the end of this month, probably in another two weeks. And then there's a couple of arrows at the bottom. These are things we'll be doing over a longer time span: refine the funding, the project listing, the prioritization, and the polling and surveys. Moving on to the March through June timeframe, that's what we envision as being the meat of the legislative process, and we have several steps in there. Again, these are illustrative. It's not all-inclusive of everything that would have to be done in the legislative process, but we have working with the administration and the General Assembly leadership committee chairs, our delegation, and other members of the General Assembly, all the way down to approval of a bill by the governor. Moving to the July through October timeframe, in July, that's when we would envision that the county commission would have to take action to place the question on the ballot for this coming November 2nd general election. And then after they place the question on the ballot, that is when a voter campaign would start. The voter campaign is not something that the city operates. That would be operated by another party like the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance. And then, of course, in November, we would have the referendum early on, and if the referendum is successful, then the county commission could adopt an ordinance implementing the proposed sales tax. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll stop here and take any questions you might have. Or, Taiwo, would you want me to go ahead and have Kelly provide her presentation?
If you just jot your notes down on your deck, I think it came to you earlier today. So, if you could just do that, then we can get through the whole entire presentation and come back and go slide by slide at the beginning for questions. So, we'll go ahead and go to the next section.
That will be CFO, Kelly Flannery.
Over the past couple of weeks, we have been developing a financial program around which could base spending a potential 1% sales and use tax. It's important to remember that this is currently based on receiving legislation for 1% sales tax from the state. We're currently envisioning that approximately 70% of the proposed 1% will go towards bus and rail transit, while the remaining 30% will go towards non-transit modes divided between the city, the county, and the six towns. The non-transit components are likely to include roadway improvements, greenways, bikeways, and pedestrian ways. The county and the six-town carve-outs are an important part of the discussion because they afford the ability for the tax to not only address the city's needs, but all residents'. We are working on a financial program, and as part of that financial planning process, we always start with goal-setting or principles. Not that I have a favorite one, but the one that I prioritize most is maintaining the city's financial condition. In addition, everything that's going to be contemplated in the transformational vision, it can't all be built in one day. That's what Director Babson is going to speak about next, but staggering implementation is critical. It's impractical to assume that we'd receive funding for construct everything for all the proposed rail lines all at once, so we expect to stagger the implementation, starting with a vision my ride and the red line in the first years of funding. The city has the existing steady-state model that contemplates approximately $100 million dedicated to roadways, bike lanes, and pedestrians for every bond cycle. When we're looking at increasing the quantity of projects, we have to be realistic about the amount of work the construction industry can handle and how we can ramp that up, and we have to be mindful of how that construction is going to impact and disrupt the community. We have begun to develop a financial plan around these principles that include several elements, that include the funding source and revenue forecast, proposed capital projects, and the annual operating and maintenance expenses for proposed projects. We will continue to refine the financial program and its assumptions over the next several weeks, but I just want to be clear, this is a program. The pencil won't ever be put down until the last project is completed. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Director Babson to discuss the strategy around project prioritization.
Thank you, Kelly. Next slide, please. Next slide. All right. So, I'm going to give you an update on where we are with our current project and programming development and what's next. On this slide, this reflects some of the conversations we've had with you last week, for example, in our budget workshop on Wednesday. Our current transportation action plan, which was adopted in 2017, identifies a multi-billion-dollar transportation plan for our city over the next 25 years. Our CIP implements projects and programs that are defined in that transportation action plan, and identifies transportation investments that advance the idea of a safe, connected transportation network for all users of our system: motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. As you heard from us last week, our current CIP funds programs for improvements like sidewalk and pedestrian safety, bicycle improvements, bridge repair and replacement, and traffic devices and signal communications improvements. But we also invest in major construction projects that improve our streets and intersections and make them complete streets for all users.
Okay. Well, before I turn it over to Taiwo, I just wanted to do a little bit of a level setting with the council. We received this at the end of your annual strategy meeting. And so what we've been doing as a team has been, we've been reaching out to the towns, having discussions internally, briefing you also. But this is the first time, I think, since the annual strategy meeting that we have an opportunity to look at this from multiple levels. And I will say that this is a complex and a complicated task that we have before us, and we will be thorough in our assessment and our analysis. There are legal ramifications. There are also financial ramifications, as well as having a better understanding of the projects that's associated with this. So I'll turn it over to Tai. I just wanted to make sure, as we talk about this, there are discussions about the silver line. But I can assure you, this is not one single project. It is a multitude of projects, both from a transportation and from a transit standpoint. And we are at the beginning stages of doing our assessment. So Tai?
Thank you, Madam Leader Jones. Good afternoon, everyone. So this is going to be a tag-team effort. There will have a number of us that will be sharing with you tonight. What we'll be presenting to you tonight is largely new information that will cover going from the legislative outlook and funding strategy. We talked to you earlier about bringing a refined funding strategy to you by April. But we want to show you the beginnings of that. And then Dana will talk about the legislative. Kelly Flannery, our CFO, will talk about funding. Then Liz Babson will talk about the projects and how we want to engage you. Then I will wrap it up with our recent polling data. So Dana, if you will step up and just kind of walk council through this and then hand off to Kelly, and then from Kelly to Liz and back to myself. Thank you.
I'll be reviewing the legislative schedule with you this evening. As you know, over the past several weeks, we have presented the Transformational Mobility Network to key points to elected officials locally, regionally, and at the state. While there's still a lot more work to be done, we want to provide some clarity on the timeline that allows us to preserve the option for a November 2021 referendum, as well as identify key milestones along the way. The timeline also presents opportunities for you to get involved in the program. Perhaps the most important part of the work is what we do in this month of February. This will result in how we progress further in this journey. Based on our ongoing conversations with you, our partners and delegation, we'll return to you at the end of the month with an assessment as to whether or not to move forward with a 2021 referendum. While this process is ongoing, we will continue to develop funding scenarios, generate project lists, and produce statistically relevant polling data. As for the slide that's in front of you, this provides a snapshot of what the process is. It's not an all-inclusive chart, but we have the major points on there. For example, this month, actually pre-March column, we've been working on securing support for the plan, especially with the county and towns. We're also in the process of drafting legislation for this effort. We still have a lot more work to do, especially working on carve-outs with the towns and the county and things like that. So we're nowhere near close, but certainly we have a framework in place. And then we'll return to council at the end of this month, probably in another two weeks. And then there's a couple of arrows at the bottom. These are things we'll be doing over a longer time span. Refine the funding, the project listing, the prioritization, and the polling and surveys. Moving on to the March-through-June timeframe, that's what we envision as being the meat of the legislative process. And we have several steps in there. Again, these are illustrative. It's not all-inclusive of everything that would have to be done in the legislative process. But we have working with the administration and the General Assembly Leadership Committee Chairs, our delegation, and other members of the General Assembly, all the way down to approval of a bill by the governor. Moving to the July-through-October timeframe. In July, that's when we would envision that the County Commission would have to take action to place the question on the ballot for this coming November 2nd general election. And then after they place the question on the ballot, that is when a voter campaign would start. The voter campaign is not something that the city operates. That would be operated by another party, like the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance. And then, of course, in November, we would have the referendum early on. And if the referendum is successful, then the County Commission could adopt an ordinance implementing the proposed sales tax. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll stop here and take any questions you might have. Or Taiwo, would you want me to go ahead and have Kelly provide her presentation?
If you just jot your notes down on your deck, I think it came to you earlier today. So if you could just do that, then we can get through the whole entire presentation and come back and go slide by slide at the beginning for questions. So we'll go ahead and go to the next section.
That will be CFO, Kelly Flannery.
Over the past couple of weeks, we have been developing a financial program around which could base spending a potential 1% sales and use tax. It's important to remember that this is currently based on receiving legislation for 1% sales tax from the state. We're currently envisioning that approximately 70% of the proposed 1% will go towards bus and rail transit, while the remaining 30% will go towards non-transit modes divided between the city, the county, and the six towns. The non-transit components are likely to include roadway improvements, greenways, bikeways, and pedestrian ways. The county and the six-town carve-outs are an important part of the discussion because they afford the ability for the tax to not only address the city's needs, but all residents. We are working on a financial program, and as part of that financial planning process, we always start with goal-setting or principles. Not that I have a favorite one, but the one that I prioritize most is maintaining the city's financial condition. In addition, everything that's going to be contemplated in the transformational vision, it can't all be built in one day. That's what Director Babson is going to speak about next. But staggering implementation is critical. It's impractical to assume that we'd receive funding for construct everything for all the proposed rail lines all at once. So we expect to stagger the implementation, starting with Envision My Ride and the Red Line in the first years of funding. The city has the existing steady-state model that contemplates approximately $100 million dedicated to roadways, bike lanes, and pedestrians for every bond cycle. When we're looking at increasing the quantity of projects, we have to be realistic about the amount of work the construction industry can handle and how we can ramp that up. And we have to be mindful of how that construction's going to impact and disrupt the community. We have begun to develop a financial plan around these principles that includes several elements that include the funding source and revenue forecasts, proposed capital projects, and the annual operating and maintenance expenses for proposed projects. We will continue to refine the financial program and its assumptions over the next several weeks. But I just want to be clear, this is a program. The pencil won't ever be put down until the last project is completed. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Director Babson to discuss the strategy around project prioritization.
Thank you, Kelly. Next slide, please. Next slide. All right. So I'm going to give you an update on where we are with our current project and programming development and what's next. On this slide, this reflects some of the conversations we've had with you last week, for example, in our budget workshop on Wednesday. Our current Transportation Action Plan, which was adopted in 2017, identifies a multi-billion-dollar transportation plan for our city over the next 25 years. Our CIP implements projects and programs that are defined in that Transportation Action Plan and identifies transportation investments that advance the idea of a safe, connected transportation network for all users of our system, motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. As you heard from us last week, our current CIP funds programs for improvements like sidewalk and pedestrian safety, bicycle improvements, bridge repair and replacement, and traffic devices and signal communications improvements. But we also invest in major construction projects that improve our streets and intersections and make them complete streets for all users. As we discussed, these projects move through an advanced planning fund, which allows us to do the planning and early design work necessary to develop strong project budgets and schedules that we can then advance through capital funding. As you saw last week in the CIP budget presentation, at our current CIP steady-state of funding, we are only able to deliver, for example, one road project and one intersection project over two bond cycles or four years. So the four that we previewed with you last week could take twice that long. Next slide, please. So what is a transformational mobility network? You hear us keep talking about that, and it is important. It's a slightly different way to think about how we move projects through capital funding and build that transportation infrastructure that provides a connected mobility network for all users. It's about accelerating the implementation of those projects and increasing the quantity that we put on the ground. This is important because we know that we need to be strategic in our investment and align that transportation investment with the growth and development of the city, coupled with expanding transit investment to support transportation in the future. So this is about continuing to invest in projects that improve the capacity on our most congested streets, be strategic about building a bike network that's connected and comfortable, and have pedestrian facilities throughout our transportation system that also provide for that safe and comfortable access, as well as supporting transit. By doing this, we can build a transportation system that connects more of our residents with the services and businesses that they need and offers them choices on how to travel to those places. So ultimately, more people can take advantage of shorter trips to their destinations. And some of those trips could even be made in something other than driving a car. Next slide, please. And so the most important piece in developing this transformational mobility network is what comes next. And that's the opportunity to get you, council, and our residents involved in reviewing projects and programs and priorities through the Transformational Mobility Network program and project development process. And so this transformational mobility network development process is an opportunity to review and refine projects with council and the community for an accelerated implementation. Our plan is to engage the community over the next several months to accomplish this. We'll work with you to schedule mobility town halls in each district over the coming months. And we'll also host stakeholder discussions and use survey tools to ensure that we're using multiple ways to gather input from you and the community. This community engagement process will ultimately influence the definition and prioritization of what we're calling these non-transit projects for roads, bike, and pedestrian infrastructure citywide. And it will allow us to really refine and define that transformational mobility network program with a refined list of projects and programs that form the basis for a potential November 2021 referendum. So ultimately, that Transformational Mobility Network program will result in a defined and prioritized list of projects for the first three to five years of that transformational mobility network. And it will establish ongoing project definition and prioritization for the full implementation of a transformational mobility network that will take us through the next couple of decades. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Taiwo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz. So like I said earlier, a lot of information, it's a lot of numbers. But I'm just about to overwhelm you with another set of numbers. But hopefully, we can walk this back and answer questions. If you will remember, back in August, actually at an October council meeting, I'd share with you that we have a third-party ALG research that's been funded by the grant we got through Bloomberg, American Climate Challenge Cities. We asked them to conduct a set of polling for us throughout this process. So back in August, right in the middle of the pandemic, they conducted the first set of polling. And then in November, post-election, they did some focus group. I will now walk you through that focus group exercise tonight. I want to focus us on this statistically relevant polling that they did for us again back in August, and then the one they just did recently. So the first slide in front of you shows that they surveyed 501 registered voters from Gaston, from Mecklenburg, Iroodale, and Union. And you see the breakdown of the demographics there, as well as the breakdown by political affiliation. One thing I want you to notice quickly is that that 61% in Mecklenburg actually is about 304 out of the overall 501 people that responded. Out of that 304, 233 respondents were in Charlotte, proper, the city of Charlotte. So obviously, the result was that 84% agreed that having more transportation options is important for our city. And then when you look at 75% at the bottom, it says there needs to be more transportation options like buses and light rail. So I shared a little bit of this information last year. So let's go to the next slide, which is really the newest information. Once we, the information, I think this was done right after the letters from the northern mayors to mayor lyles with regards to what they would like to see and concerns that they would like to see addressed. And we've got a lot of information out in the media with regards to this. This was conducted after people understand what the increase in sales tax may be, the potential for this to be $4 to $6 billion of the $8 to $12 billion program, and the fact that this could take a while to build out. So we did not survey Charlotte in this exercise because we did back in August. So this was specifically focused on the six towns in Mecklenburg County. And you're going to notice, again, the breakdown by the demographics, but also by towns. The only town that we did not have anyone who took part in the polling exercise was Mid-Hill. Again, this was not done by the city. It wasn't done by city staff. This was done by a third-party ALG research, and they do this generally all over the world. Antasville had the most, and so they did this break based on population of each town. And then most of the constituents interviewed were Republican. We actually have, in addition to this, about 12% who are leaning Republican. And despite all of that information there, 62%, really, 2 to 1 margin, that's the favored increase in funding for local public transportation infrastructure in Mecklenburg County. Obviously, you look at that 50% and the 58%, 50% really support the increase in county sales tax to fund it, 58%. You know, we did not explain what bonds are. We just pretty much went to them and asking specific information as to would you support bonds? Would you support increase in sales tax? One number that is in here is that about 70% said they would not support property tax increase. And so there was definitely a support for sales tax, but also increase in funding. Again, I need to emphasize the fact that these were non-Charlotte respondents. This was based on all the six towns, especially once we got the letter and a lot of media information out there. And a lot of what we shared with you in the prior slides with regards to what this does between transit and non-transit, what this does between extending Red Line to the north, Blue Line to Ballantyne, Pineville, Matthews, Silver Line to the airport, and Gold Line to Rosa Parks, and also as Eastland. So I'm going to wrap up with this, because it's a lot of information, I know. This data here again was conducted by a third-party. We don't have all of the details, but this is the top margin information they gave us that we can share with you. And over time, if there are further questions, I'm sure that I'll be able to answer them. So I'll stop here and, you know, put it back to the mayor. If there are any specific questions for the four of us, we'd be glad to address them. Thank you.
So now that we're on this section, why don't we start from the back and go forward? So on the polling data, are there questions, I mean, specific or general about the polling data? Mr. Winston?
Well, I actually had a question. My first question was directed at Dana.
Okay. I was just, okay. Can we do this one on polling data and then work our way backwards in the slides? That's what I thought we would do. But glad to do it any way that the council wants.
I don't have any questions about the polling data.
I have a question about the polling data.
All right. Mr. Driggs, please.
Thank you. When we ask these questions, did we talk about any particular amount of tax increase? Or did we just ask them in general whether they thought the idea of increasing funding made sense?
Councilman Driggs, we were specific with regards to increase in sales tax.
Right. Did you talk about by how much?
Yes, we did.
So these responses were related to an increase of 1% in the sales tax?
These responses were, yes, responding to increase of up to 1%, half percent or up to 1% in sales tax, yes.
So up to 1%?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not sure. I guess that's my polling question. I have others, but thank you, Mayor.
And I will quickly add to that also that this is a snapshot in time. We do not intend to stop here. Dana said at the beginning during his presentation that we're going to continue to have polling data, not only of residents, but also of businesses. So it might be the next time I'm in front of you, or maybe March, we'll show you another set of data that could be conducted again by a third-party. The city will not be conducting any of these polling exercises, and they will all be statistically relevant to this work. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on polling data?
Yes, I have a question.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you.
And then we'll be followed by Ms. Ashmira.
Okay, thank you. So the, I heard the number, there were 500 people that were polled. Is that right?
If we go back to the previous slide, there were, on this particular one, for the towns, it was 400. But for the four-county region, it was 501. And most of those, 304 of those from Mecklenburg County, 233 of those from Charlotte.
Okay. So then what was the response rate then?
It's really what you see on this slide. 84% agreed that having more transportation option is important. But there's a caveat to this particular slide. At the time we did this, we did not, the task force had not come up with its recommendation for a 1-cent mobility tax. This was the response then. In November, by the time we got to November to do the focus group, we were already talking about the potential for 1-cent mobility sales tax. I do not have the information on the focus group in front of you right now. I shared it earlier back in December. But the number was still up, over 70% of the respondents supporting that, even after they knew the information.
So my question, I see the 84% of the respondents felt a certain way. But I was asking about the overall response rate of the, or of the surveys that were sent out. And I didn't know if you had that information available. 304 responses from 500, that about 80% response rate?
Possibly we can get that for you. But what I'm saying is that the 61% that responded in Mecklenburg County has 233 of those in Charlotte. But I don't know the specific percentage, if that's what you're asking, of the Charlotte respondents. But I, yeah, okay.
No, I was asking how many people responded overall. Is there a minimum response rate that we consider a valid?
Okay, I think I see where you're going.
How many, how many calls did you have to make to get the 501?
Yes.
Is that right, Ms. Johnson?
They were selected, this, they were selected and they were paid, you know, to participate in this effort, just like any polling.
Okay. My question is, how many? What's the response percentage that we require in order for it to be considered a valid?
In order for us to win, I believe, is 51% that you need to win a ballot initiative.
No, I think she had a different question. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson had a different question.
Okay. She wants to get a better understanding of how we look at this as being a significant polling.
Okay, 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 okay. Yes, yes, yes. There is necessarily no significant number, but you will have to do a random sampling. 501 in this case is what was determined as statistically relevant. And for the, in the case of the next slide, which has 400, that also was determined to be statistically relevant for non-Charlotte countywide polling.
Okay, that's all the polling questions I have. Thank you.
How many people did you have to poll in order to get 500 responses? It's not a complicated question.
Mr. Driggs, I have Ms. Ashmira next. I have to come back to you, okay? Ms. Ashmira?
Mr. Driggs, if he goes to follow up, I can raise, no problem.
All right. Mr. Driggs?
I was just trying to clarify the prior question because I'd be interested to hear the answer too. How many people did you have to poll in order to get 500 responses?
I can get that information for us. I don't have that with me right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the polling that is presented here doesn't align with the comments that were made by North Mecklenburg in the letter that they had sent to us. So has this results, have you shared these results with them, Taiwo? And what has changed? Because the last I heard that there was zero enthusiasm from North Mecklenburg.
Those are the types of statements that really led us to want to poll this right after all of that information. But that's the plan. We haven't shared this information with them, at least I have not. But that's the intent, that we would do that.
And to follow up on that, the concerns that North Mecklenburg leaders had raised were around the Red Line. So has the timeline changed? Or has anything changed in our plan to garner their support?
So not really. We think that the needle has moved in a positive direction with regards to opportunity to have, to continue to have positive conversations with Norfolk Southern with regards to Red Line. If you recall, one of the things that Ms. Flannery, our CFO, shared earlier on in a slide is that two things are going to be priority if we were to get authorization from the NCGA for a 1% increase in sales tax. One is implementing the Envision My Ride recommendations about improving our bus services throughout the county. But the second will also be the Red Line. And if you look at the, and you don't have all of that information in front of you, but even when you look at the cost breakdown, a communal rail transit system is the most affordable to build when you compare with light rail. So I think it's really more of having conversations with Norfolk Southern. And I think that there is a positive, that is going to go in a positive direction than what we've had previously.
Ms. Johnson, has anything also occurred besides the Red Line?
Yeah. So to Ms. Ashmira's question about have things changed, I'll just make it clear that in my discussions with the town managers, especially the town managers to the north, I would say nothing has changed. It's going to be very difficult to get this coalition together in terms of the city and the towns and the county and the region. And a lot of it has to do with what occurred at the end of, you know, 1998 and what was, what the northern towns thought that they would receive based on the half-cent sales tax. A lot of what we're doing right now is trying to work with all of the towns in the county. And as, you know, Tai talked about earlier, it's going to be even larger than that to get this for a regional approach. But I will say, this is just one data point. There's a lot of data that's been discussed, that's been shared. But I don't want the council to walk away with tonight believing that all of a sudden there's a 180 from the northern towns.
So, thank you, Mr. Manager. Certainly, it's going to be very crucial for us to get support from our North Mecklenburg neighbors, especially from towns like Davidson and Cornelius and Hurstville. I'm trying to figure out, certainly, they had raised concerns around trust issues, how they were promised in the past, but those promises were not being delivered on. So I'm trying to figure out with this survey, it's just the one part of the puzzle, but we're trying to figure out what are the steps that staff has taken to garner their support and to build? to garner their support and to build trust with North Mecklenburg leaders.
So thank you, Councilman Ashmira. One of the things that we started off with is me having discussions with the town managers and basically reiterating what you just said, that I know that while I wasn't here, there were a couple of the managers that were around, there were thoughts about what would occur, and they didn't occur, especially with the red line. So what we're trying to do is to continue to have these conversations with the towns, specifically with the town managers for me, and some of the electeds, talking with the electeds. But for us right now, I think what's important is not necessarily just the polling, but tonight is the first time that you see in our analysis that with this one cent sales tax, there's an opportunity to have both a transit component, but also a transportation component. And that transportation component is just not for the city, it's for the county, it's for the towns, and it includes greenways and roads and sidewalks and bike paths. And I think that is something that in our initial discussions with the towns has intrigued them. We've used terms like a carve-out. It's too early to say what a carve-out could be, but I hope that one of the takeaways tonight is that the one cent sales tax can cover multiple transit opportunities for the city and the county and the region, as well as transportation projects too.
All right, Mr. Phipps? And then we're going to go to the next section. Mr. Phipps?
Yeah, I was, had a question about the slide that had the 70/30 split on it.
Okay, so why don't we, let's, let's go back to, can we get the team to go, the slides to go back? We're going to go, I think everybody seems more interested in the section at the beginning, so we'll just start with the section on funding overview, Mr. Phipps. You were asking the question about the funding overview, right?
Let's move these slides back.
All right, so move the slides, if you can get it to the slide that is planned Charlotte capital investment. I don't have numbers on this.
Right, that's the one. Now, I've heard comments.
It's on page three, the first one. Yeah, we're good. All right, Mr. Phipps?
Yeah, I've heard comments that seem to express some optimism with some potential progress with the red line. So that's encouraging. I don't know what it will lead to, but my other question is, you have here these 22 bus routes countywide, there's supposed to be some improvements. Are those mostly express bus lines, or are some of our internal street routes included in that?
I know Mr. Lewis is on, and maybe he will step up, but before he does, I can speak to that. First of all, let me clarify the conversation with regards to red line. I think it's moving in a positive direction because there's a change in leadership that we can work with, and they are willing to also have conversation with us. That's a good thing. So I'll say that that's positive. With regards to the 22 bus routes, that's coming straight out of the recommendations of Envision My Ride. These are top performing routes. There may be today 30 minutes, 45 minutes frequencies between them, and they are countywide. They're not express routes, they're not necessarily a rapid bus transit, they are just regular buses that we can improve frequencies on them today and over the next few years that will be able to reduce those 30, 45 minute intervals to at least 15 minutes between the bus services.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Winston?
Yes, I'd like to, Mr. Fenton, what is the potential impact on referenda in November, given the possibility that city council elections may be going?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Winston. Because this is, your question involves legal issues with both the state and the federal government. I'm going to have to defer to the city attorney on that.
So, Mr. Winston, there are several moving parts that are happening here as it relates to us waiting for the results coming back from the census and what impact it may have on the city. Also, the school board could potentially be impacted as well. We do anticipate, and we are monitoring that situation, and we do anticipate, and I haven't spoken with the manager about this yet, but we have briefly discussed bringing back to you an item to discuss that more, more in depth, because again, there are a lot of moving parts. But it is a consideration, if there are no municipal elections, whether or not we can actually even have a referendum going forward. And we'll have a, we'll have a more comprehensive answer for you at a later, but fairly close in time date.
So before, Mr. Baker, I didn't have a chance to talk with you about this, but I've heard a lot of conversation in the media, various programs, and lots of people talking about the census data and the redistricting issues. So tomorrow, I plan to send out a referral to the Budget and Effectiveness Government Committee. To the extent that we know the census data, the 2020 census data is received later than normal, if it may affect the drawing of any of our city council district lines, I recommend that we take this question of cities' options proceeding with or postponing municipal elections be referred and evaluated by the Budget and Effectiveness Committee. I think we ought to have a plan and another plan, and maybe another plan, but I would ask them to develop principles and options for redistricting and decision-making available under the law for consideration by council, so that when the data does come in, we know which direction we're going in. So I know that the planning staff has the availability of current population data for the city. This will be something that I would suggest, and I will also put a call into the chair of the school board, just to let them know this is what we're going to start to begin to do. Right now, if you go to the Board of Elections site, they say the schedule, offices, dates for filing, and fees for filing are just not known and are available at this time. So I think we have some time to think about how, what is our process for doing this. And I would like to refer that, or am referring that to the Budget and Effective Governance Committee to work with the city attorney and the planning staff to put together some planning, some process options for the council's consideration. Come back if we can in the next strategy session with some ideas of what that means. So.
I do think it is, it'd be important for folks to know what the democratic process is moving forward. I do have another question for Mr. Fenton. Maybe he can give us some light about what is happening or what we can, if we do have a referendum in November, what are our partners in the state doing if not with us? You know, is there a possibility that there is a state transportation bond or tax bond on, on, on the ballot? How likely is that? How unlikely is that? And how does that affect our strategy moving forward?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Winston. A couple of things in there. Last couple of years, there have been attempts to try to get some sort of a statewide transportation bond, and they haven't gone anywhere. Generally, the Senate has been more, more conservative when it comes to issuing debt. But with what's happened in the last year with the pandemic and with the NC DOT revenue situation, there may be, there may be an opening there. So there very well could be serious consideration of a statewide transportation bond this year. Now, in terms of whether that bond would be held, that election would be held in this coming November or at a later date, we just don't know right now. But certainly, you know, in the, with the possibility, if we do decide to move forward this year, try to get the legislation, and let's say we do get some movement on legislation, then there's, then there's some synergy there that we might be able to tap into. But in terms of placement on a, on a, on a certain date, I'm not really ready to, to talk about that right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Winston? Okay, all right. So Ms. Watlington?
Yes, I've got a few questions. A couple I just want to make sure I understood from Ms. Babson's presentation. Where I saw the plus or minus 102 million per bond cycle, can you help me understand where that would be coming from?
Yes, Councilmember Watlington, this is Liz Babson. That $100 million per bond is what's reflective of the current steady state of funding. If I can, I'd like to refer you back to some of the conversations we had with you on Wednesday in the budget workshop. And so that's the current capacity with our steady state of CIP investment for transportation infrastructure.
So it's not a plus or minus 102 million, like there's an additional 102 million available in the city?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The other thing I want to ask you about was, you talked about the four years' worth of project execution. Just so I'm clear, the funding though would still be limited to that bond cycle?
Yes, ma'am, that's taking that $100 million every bond cycle and applying it toward the projects and the cost estimates that we provided to you and the rest of council on Wednesday as part of that budget workshop.
But those, those funds would be distributed over the bond, over more than one bond cycle, or they would be funded in one bond cycle even though they're executed across two bond cycles? I'm trying to get understand the cash flow.
So Ms. Watlington, I'll take a shot at what I think you're asking. So in the steady state, and let's say it's a little bit short of $200 million, over the course of the next few weeks, council in these workshops and strategy sessions may find that $100 million for roads or for transportation is not enough. You may decide that 50 million, don't fall out of your seat, Pam Lightman, but 50 million dollars every bond cycle for affordable housing may be too much, depending on your priorities. So what we have is, we just started off by using some averages and what has been spent over the course of the last few years, but just think about your bond as being fiscally constrained, and what, how you populate that, how much is roads, how much is neighborhoods, how much is housing, will be a decision for this council.
Let me ask it differently. We have $200 million per bond cycle. If there is a project or a sum of projects that costs 200 million, but they're going to take two bond cycles to be executed, can we split that total cost over two bond cycles? Therefore, I still have 100 million for affordable housing in this bond cycle despite not being fully encumbered based on the other, based on the balance of the other projects?
Sure. So I'm going to make sure I don't trip myself up so Kelly can bail me out. So the way that we set aside funds, I call it a draw schedule for how do you spend, what's your spend rate for a particular project? So if the project takes you two years or two and a half years to actually execute, and you need dollars out the door, there's a way to set this up so that you potentially could split it over two bond cycles. But I think ultimately, what Liz suggested last week is, given where we are, assuming the steady state, assuming about $100 million related to transportation, with everything else you do, sidewalks, bike paths, things of that nature, if a road is going to cost about, I don't know, 70 million dollars, and an intersection is going to cost about 30, then over the course of four bond cycles, you could basically do two, two intersections, two roads. Did I get that right, Liz?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Can, Ms. Watlington, may I follow up to your question?
Please.
One of the things that I think we have to think about, and this is it, Mr. Johnson, when we list out on our bond referendum and the public votes, we would have, if we decide to divide up a road over two years, wouldn't we have to have either the total cost on the referendum, or say something different, like land acquisition for a road versus construction of a road? I'm, I'm just worried about how, if we're going to the voters, does the referendum have to say that we're going to do 50% of the project or the total project?
Sure. So I'll buy some time for the folks in CH14, and I'll use the example of Bryant Farms Road. We put it in two bond cycles. We said that we couldn't build it in two years. So in the first bond cycle, the 2018 bond cycle, Mr. Driggs, we put 2 million in. It's a $20 million road. We said in those, that first bond cycle, the 2 million would pay for the design, and you would have the 18 million dollars for the construction. Now, I remember my first year or so here, and I went to one of the Valentine breakfasts, and someone said, "Well, Mr. Manager, if you put 2 million dollars in design, I want to make sure in the next bond cycle I get my road." So that is, as we start to think, some of it is how do we finance it? But the assumption is, is that your planning fund is, has given us an opportunity to get to 30% design, and we have more certainty with the cost of these projects. So if we get the green light to go forward, we are going to build the road, whether we put it in one bond or two bonds. But getting to this 30% design is something we didn't have during the big ideas, and we have more certainty with cost.
Thank you.
I think Liz will applaud you for that.
All right. I have Mayor Protem, and we still have one more item on our agenda that's really policy. Oh, you have another question? I am so sorry, Ms. Watlington. My apologies. Mr.?
That's okay.
Ms. Watlington?
Real quick, the, I just want to make sure I understood this TMN versus the CIP. Are these two different buckets, or is this TMN on the slide just supposed to be how you're developing new projects? Because I know we already have our CIP projects, for instance, in District 3, that we know are still in the pipeline. Is the intent that we're identifying additional projects over that through this TMN process?
So Liz, let me take a stab at that, and then you can jump in. So the CIP, what you have is what you currently have today, based on what the manager was saying. Remember that the slide that Kelly shared with you on the funding shows a $500 million steady state CIP over a 10-year period. That's about five bond cycles, right? And that has about 100 and plus or minus 102 million every bond cycle. That takes you to your steady state. That's what you have today. That's incremental. If we did not get anything with regards to sales tax increase, that's how we're going to continue to operate. But once you move into the TMN, that's the Transformation and Mobility Network, which says you have a one cent increase in sales tax, and 30% of that one cent increase allows you to be able to focus on the non-transit, which is roadway, bicycle, pedestrian, allows you to not only have more projects to do, but to accelerate this project. And if you look towards the right of that screen, what you see in the middle in terms of outcome focuses on the first three to five years, because there's some certainty with the, with the, with those projects, right, within the first three to five years, with regards to advanced planning, with regards to conceptual designing and, and building them. So that TMN is an improvement over how we do it today, which is really the CIP, which is really what you get every bond cycle. Liz, I don't know if I called that well, but you may want to add to that.
Well, before you start, I just want to make sure I've been clear. What I'm asking is, there is a list of about 15 to 20 projects already identified as CIP projects in District 3 that we know, at least within steady state, there's not enough money to do. Is the idea then that this TMN work is going to, must find us new ways to fund what we already know? Are the needs, or are we looking to create another list of needs?
It will allow you to be able to do what you have today.
Okay.
Yes.
And then finally, some polling questions. I just wanted to ask on the polling data, did you have socioeconomic data for the respondents? I'm just curious, as far as the sales tax, if across the board, regardless of income level, people were supportive of the sales tax?
I, I don't have all of the details, but yes, for, for all the polling data that we've done, and including the focus groups, socioeconomic data was very important in terms of income bracket. Not even that, including those who use the system and those who don't.
And so we didn't see any discrepancies or any differences between support levels across income?
It did, there was no significant difference in that.
Okay. And then as far as, when you talk about 80% or 84% is supportive of these particular taxes, what form did those answers take? Were they like ordinal questions, or was it simply a yes or no? Was there an option? Was there an option to rate their preference level, or were they given other options to select from? I'm just, I want to understand where the question is posed.
If I recall very well, again, this was done by thought party. This wasn't done by the city, so we never drafted those questions. But from what I saw that they shared, there were rarely any yes or no questions. They were very direct and specific to this effort and not asking generic question like, what do you think about this or, you know, or that? And, and there were some really deep questions in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor Protem?
I took my hand, I took my hand down, Madam Mayor, my questions were answered.
Okay, Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, if I can just summarize kind of what my feelings are at this moment, given an incredibly tight timeline, a whole lot of actions left, and a lot of good people working hard on it, I would say that part of me is, is very concerned that we're considering doing something that potentially raises taxes in a material way and goes down certain paths, you know, in deciding what we're going to make our bet on the future of transportation and where it's going to be had, discussions we've been having for years now in this environment that we're in. But the other part of me is still at the table trying to productively work, because I feel like there's an opportunity here that we could get right or wrong. And the opportunity, we could get wrong a thousand different ways, but the opportunity is really around the premise that there is, and potentially will be more, federal funding. And those who are ready are going to be ready to take advantage of the federal funding and have transformational opportunities. So I'm still kind of in good faith trying to operate here. I think when I, my gut reaction, when I see kind of this presentation today is, there's some good work, we're laying out the, what's going on with the legislative agenda over this, but I get very uncomfortable when I see these, these poll, this polling information, because on one side, and this is why I think there's might be some folks confused watching us right now, on one side of the coin, we know there are people in Charlotte and the towns surrounding us that want more transit opportunities. And depending on how they were asked, we can make a poll literally say anything we want. But I think there's a more fundamental point, which is, the problem isn't the people polled or the methodology that's done so, the problem is those folks in the towns elect their own representatives that we have to partner with and deal with in order to find an ultimate solution here. So the last thing I want is for particularly those leaders in those towns to think they're seeing some kind of view of what their folks that elect them want, because clearly without the cross tabs and all the other things you need to understand polling, this can be completely shredded from one way to another. So we know we have work left to do there. We know we have our own council work, and we have general assembly work and community work. I think the biggest thing, though, is, does anyone have an update on what's going on on the federal side? Because that's, to me, is the game-changing moment, why a lot of people who maybe are frustrated or were promised things in the past, and now it's time for a new conversation, and is there a new deal? All those elements, like that big carrot that's floating above is what's going to go on with the new administration, with the federal funding that makes things, transformational things like this, whether it's rail or roads or sky or everything in between possible. So hopefully that made sense as, as how I'm just gut feeling right now, but why I'm still trying to work with everyone to see what the path is. But does anyone have an update on the federal side of all this?
Maybe I can speak to that, and John is available, maybe he can. What we do know is this, the infrastructure plan at the federal level includes multimodal efforts to invest in multimodal system like we're proposing here. We're still going to sit down and meet with them, but one of the things we have quickly found out also is that the cities that have done what we're about to do all of a sudden are ready. There are no guarantees, it's still competitive effort, obviously, but without any local match or opportunity to be able to say, we have a potential to have a local match seeking federally funding, seeking federal funding in the process is not even a thing, because they're going to, that's the first question that will be asked. There's, there's no guarantee, obviously, which is why Kelly said what she said, we do not want to compete with ourselves when that opportunity comes to come to enter into a federal process. We have a silver line that's going through design and engineering and environmental process right now. We have a red line that was designed up to a higher percentage some years ago that needs to be refined. We have a gold line that was designed up to 30% that needs to be refined, but all of those things are for naught if we don't have a local match that we could actually step forward and say, we want this red line or this silver line or this gold line to enter into an environmental process. What we've put in front of you and what we're going to be sharing with you does not even put the Ambition My Right into a federal process. It puts that all on us, that we can do it within this exercise. But all the real efforts will have to be entered into a federal process, which right now, everything sounds positive from what we're hearing with regards to infrastructure funding. But again, there are no, we're not even having conversation unless we can answer the question as to whether we have a local match for, to be able to get into a federal funding process. But we do know that there is interest there, there is conversations going on with our competing cities, that they know their position in themselves for this type of opportunity that we're about to, to, to get into. But again, there are no guarantees. It just makes us more competitive if we have something to show for.
Got it, so no, no, no new update from the feds?
Nothing new.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bakari. Ms. Ashmira, you have the last word, as they say. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Driggs.
Oh, Mr. Driggs, Ms. Ashmira, you have the next to the last word.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep it brief, because some of my questions have already been addressed here. Can we go back to the slide of prioritization? Ms. Bachin?
This slide.
Okay. Yes, so I'm trying to understand where we have under countywide bus and rail transit system. So are we prioritizing the bus service frequency before working on our light rail, such as red line, silver line, and blue line?
Definitely, that's the priority. We know that, again, like I said earlier, you cannot just get into a construction mode. You still have to do some environmental work, some design work, like we're doing for Silver Line right now, or refining existing work. You don't need to do all of that for a bus system. And so for our bus system, we think that that's a priority for us, regardless of what comes out of NCGA, at the end of the day, it will remain a priority for us to improve our bus network system. What this does for us, however, though, is allow, it allows us to get into it in an accelerated timeframe to be able to implement the recommendations of Ambition My Right.
Yes, and I think that also addresses the short-term issue of getting from A to point B while we work on a long-term plan for light rail.
Yes.
So thank you for prioritizing that.
Ms. Ashmira, are you, are you complete with the questions?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted quickly to respond to Ms. Watlington's question. You should understand that when we put something on the ballot for the 2022 bond cycle, that doesn't mean we're going to issue bonds in 2022. It means we get authorization from the public to issue bonds for the purposes described on the ballot, and in fact, that authorization extends out seven years. So in practice, what happens is, we have that authorization in hand, we start work. Typically, we would issue bond anticipation notes as construction financing, and the bonds themselves would be issued at some future date to refinance those construction notes. So I just want you to appreciate that the 2022 ballot, it does not constitute an undertaking to issue the debt at that time, and I think that explains a lot of what you were trying to get at. Unless anybody on staff disagrees with that description. I just wanted to know whether the referendum, whether it is our intention that the referendum will ask for 1%. I was interested to hear that we were starting to recognize constraints on when the work could happen or the sequence and so on. So is there any thought being given to actually requesting authority for the tax in stages over time, or would the referendum this year say, does the public authorize a one-cent sales tax increase?
So, Mr. Driggs, the, I believe the task that was handed to me was to do an assessment of a one-cent sales tax increase that would allow for transportation and transit projects to be on a 2021 referendum. And you, as you know me and you know the team, we will always look to see whether or not there are any deviations from that, but that's where we're starting off with, and we tried to put that out tonight, the possibility of a one-cent sales tax increase for these types of projects with a November 2021 referendum.
Understood, and would your expectation be that if that's approved, that the collection of the one-cent sales tax commences virtually immediately, or would it somehow track the progress of these projects?
Tie, I think what we have done, Mr. Driggs, is been able to make some assumptions, whether or not this begins July of 2022 or sometime afterwards. So again, we're trying to keep our flexibility, but right now, it's, you know, with the assumption of the projects that are listed, which includes the red line and with the November referendum.
Right, and final quick question on the slide, right, the first slide of the funding overview section, you've got a 0.3% allocation to this county and the city and the towns. So does that mean when we look at the $4 to $6 billion local cost component of the total scope of the mobility plan, that we're expecting the county and the city and the towns to pay 1.2 to 1.8 billion and, and to be funded by their share of the tax?
So, Mr. Driggs, as we go forward, that was a task force numbers, and I will tell you that the task force numbers are not necessarily consistent with the numbers that we're working on right now. So if we can leave that as task force work and pivot over to staff work, so we do have some different numbers, and I'd like to get those cleaned up a bit before we start producing a new set of numbers. Is that fair?
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just making the general point that if we're allocating 30% of the revenue from the sales tax, I'm assuming that 30% of the cost of the projects within the scope of the mobility plan will be borne by those, by the county and the towns, and that they are not going to have funds for investments other than we've been discussing in the scope of our mobility plan as a result of that allocation. So they're going to be part of the total mobility plan, and the money that's allocated to them will pay for a portion of the mobility plan. Is that a fair statement?
It will pay for the non-transit piece of the mobility plan, yes, and that's, that's the plan. So, so for example, county, greenways, towns, roadway improvement, bike ways, but it's only limited to the non-transit piece, same goes for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much for the update on the process, Mr. Jones, and thanks to the team, the entire team for the information. So the next item on our agenda is the source of income discrimination, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Jones and for an overview on the recommended strategy, or should I recognize Mr. Graham? Mr. Graham, are you going to open this up?
If I can.
That certainly will, I recognize the chair of the committee, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item that you have before us is a topic that has been surfacing within the council environment since June of this year, starting with the COVID-19 task force. There was a recommendation made from that task force to the Great Neighborhoods Committee. The committee began doing our due diligence in terms of taking up the issue. We've had two committee meetings relating to the specific topic. One in December, where we received the first overview based on instructions given to staff to bring back recommendations and/or ordinance that recommend, those recommendations were brought in December. They were reviewed again in January. We voted out a series of recommendations for the council's consideration. Those recommendations will be presented today. The presentation is longer than usual, because there's a lot of information to be considered, and the director of housing, Ms. Wyman, will be here to present those recommendations and the, her team for the council's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham and Mayor and Manager Jones. I am Pam Wyman, I'm your Housing and Neighborhood Services Director. Let me just start by saying that this is indeed a lot of information, as Mr. Graham has said, this is a tag-team effort, and so I'm going to kick off the presentation walking through the committee charge. Willie Ratchford, who is the director of the city's Community Relations Committee, will join us to talk about, provide some background on the Fair Housing Ordinance. Warren Wooton from Housing Services will walk through some research. I'll come back to you to discuss our landlord survey, and then you will hear a SWOT analysis from Willie Ratchford and Anna Shalonas from our legal department, and then I'll come back to close it up to talk about some recommendations and some next steps. Let me also preface this by saying to, again, this is complex information, our goal here tonight is to provide you a full overview of our source of income discrimination work. I also think it's important to begin by just restating and framing the discussion tonight. The first thing I want to point out is that your staff does not support discrimination based on source of income or otherwise. We're here to address what we believe is a very complex problem and here to offer you some practical information. Finally, this work, I also like to say, it considers all sources of income. However, because the housing choice vouchers are the largest source of rental subsidy in our community, you'll hear a lot about housing choice voucher, but I want us to all be assured that we consider all sources of income and we discuss that. So as Mr. Graham has alluded to, this has been in committee, you've discussed it most recently at your retreat or your annual strategy session. And so with that, we were charged, your staff was charged with the following, and if you could go to the next slide for me, please. We were charged to do four things. We were charged to draft a proposed local source of income discrimination ordinance and complete a SWOT analysis, providing some alternatives of that ordinance. We were, we were charged to provide a list of cities that prohibit discrimination based on source of income, you'll see that in the research. We were also asked to engage in LIVIAN to see, to understand what type of mitigation factors that they could help with, and we were also asked to provide alternatives and recommendations and incentives and perhaps some educational opportunities that would help mitigate landlords' concerns when we talked about source of income discrimination. And so at this point, I want to invite Willie Ratchford into the discussion to talk about the, provide some background on the Charlotte Fair Housing Ordinance. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ratchford.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman, and if the, Wendy or whoever with.
Mr. Ratchford is breaking up.
To the next slide, please. Hello?
Are you advancing the slide?
Hello, can you all hear me?
It's coming.
We can now, yes.
Oh, can you all hear me?
We can now, Willie, yes.
Okay, if you will go back one slide, Wendy, that would be helpful, please.
There you go, Willie.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pam, and, thank you, Pam. Mayor and members of City Council, I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity for us to share information regarding the Charlotte Fair Housing Ordinance, especially as it relates to discrimination based upon source of income. As most of you As most of you are aware, the City of Charlotte has a Fair Housing Ordinance that is actually administered by the staff of the Community Relations Committee. And this ordinance has been in existence since 1980. The ordinance prohibits discrimination based on race, religion, color, sex, national origin, familiar status, which means that you have children 18 years of age or younger in your custody. Or in other words, you cannot discriminate against a family because they have children and housing, and of course disability. The Community Relations Committee receives anywhere from 30 to 40 complaints a year. And the, the actual basis for those complaints, for the most part, is race, disability, and familiar status. In the past.
We can hear you, Willie.
Of source of, of income. So we don't get, you can hear me?
We can. Keep, keep, keep moving. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying, in the last three years, we have only had three inquiries, not cases, but inquiries, where folk have alleged that they were victims of housing discrimination based upon their source of income. So we don't really get that much. We don't really get that many complaints as a result of this particular status. Next slide, please. The City's Human Relations Ordinance, Article 5, actually is what encompasses the Fair Housing Ordinance. And as you can see in this highlighted area of the slide at the bottom, the general purpose of the ordinance is to secure for all persons within the city freedom from discrimination of.
I'm not sure if y'all can hear Willie, but I can.
Yeah.
Their protection status.
Yeah, he's breaking up.
I'm not sure who's on, who's saying, who's speaking now.
We can't hear him, Mayor.
You can't. So, Mr. Ratchford, hey, if you could, I think your video is off. Make sure you're, turn your video off and it may help with your audio because we're having some audio issues.
My, my suggestion is.
I'm off the whole time.
My suggestion is it's not easy to hear you, Mr. Ratchford. So how many more slides do you have? And should we go ahead and get to the content from the committee? Or, Mr. Graham, what do you think? Tell me what you guys want to do.
Here's, here's, I'm sorry, Mr. Graham, go ahead.
I think it's good foundation information for, for decision making. So I would love for them to get through the presentation.
So we have, does everybody have the deck that was sent to them?
Mayor, if it's easy, maybe I can summarize what I believe to be Mr. Willie's, Mr. Ratchford's key points and where he can back, back me up where I, where I mess up, if that's okay.
That would be great. Thank you. I think that might make it a little bit easier.
Okay, Willie, just come, come rescue me if, if I, if I mess up because you indeed are the expert. If I, if I could go slide 44, I think he finished that up. I think one of the key points there, and we've tried to bold them on the presentation, is that in the last five years, we've had three inquiries that have been received for potential source of income discrimination. So because there is a Fair Housing Ordinance.
I'm going to mute.
I think Willie needs to mute too, maybe.
Yeah.
Willie, if you would mute, please?
There is currently a Fair Housing Ordinance in place. And so what we, what we, what Mr. Ratchford, Ratchford informed us of is that we would not need to create a separate ordinance for source, to add source of income. So you can see the language there and he, he's already alluded to that in our current Fair Housing Ordinance, we currently protect discrimination based of, based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, handicap, or familiar status. If we were going to go down this path, we simply would need to add source of income to, into the purpose of our existing ordinance. If you go to the next slide for me, please, go, one more, go to the next slide for me. Keep going. Go to the next slide for me, please. And so what this, the purpose of this slide is really just to show you, if we added source of income into our current Fair Housing Ordinance, the following sections would need to be updated to include that. So that's Sections 12 107 through Sections 12 116. Go to the next slide for me, please. It was important for us to, if we're going to go down this road, to have a proposed definition of source of income. And so I'm not going to read that definition to you because you have it in front of you. But this is what was suggested from our, our legal, from a legal perspective and in consultation with Mr. Ratchford about what, how we would consider source of income. And what I would just point out there is we, we also take, we want to make sure that we're including all sources of income. So I mean, let's try this and see if we can get Mr. Wooton in to walk through the research. But if you can't, I'll come back and do my best with that as well. So if you could go to the next slide for me, please. Mr. Wooton?
Thank you, Ms. Wyman. Staff here did research on both the national and municipal level, looking at this issue. And here's a summary, summary of what we found. The majority of states do not have source of income laws. 16 states do have some type of source of income law on the books, but four of these specifically exclude the housing choice voucher program. Two states that we found specifically had already preempted any local source of income protection. Next slide, please. So we did research on some of our peer cities. These cities should be familiar to you. These are typical cities that we use when we compare Charlotte to our community. Of the 14 that responded, we found that eight had some kind of source of income discrimination ordinance on their books. But four of those were, were not active. One was found locally to be not enforceable. And then three others, the two in Texas and Memphis ordinance, were all superseded by their state governments. Next slide, please. So here are, here are the five that had no source of income on the books. And one had already been preempted. So Indiana had already preempted any action in Indianapolis. But we did find that Columbus, Ohio was in the same stage as you are, sort of considering what actions to take. Next slide, please. So here, this is looking closer to home at some of our, our partner cities here in North Carolina. You will see that the three at the top, Durham, Raleigh, and Nashville, had done some thinking around this. Two of them are sort of looking at what their options are and monitoring activity around source of income discrimination. And the government had already put a program in place for incentives, but their incentives were basically focused on helping formerly homeless get into housing. Next slide, please. So here we started looking at what other incentives were being used across the country to incentivize, you know, landlords accepting all, all forms of vouchers and subsidies. We found that several were in place. I'm not going to read this entire slide to you, but we did find that, for instance, in California, there was a sign up bonus, very similar to Durham. And then we found in several locations, including in Oregon and Washington, that there was a guaranteed program, which basically provided the landlord a guarantee if they rented to people that had alternative forms of income and payment for their rentals that they could, if their deposits exceeded damages, they could use these special funds set up to mitigate those damages to their property. Next slide, please. So we also looked locally. We've actually been doing some, some work around incentivizing landlords here in Charlotte to take tenants. And you'll see some of those incentives look familiar to what you saw going on nationally. Again, they have a mitigation program that will cover excess damage. They were, they're using sign up bonuses to, to incentivize landlords to take these tenants. They're also hiring some private inspectors to speed up the inspection process. And all of this is being managed through the Housing CLT program, which is a partnership with many partners here in Charlotte, but it's hosted and run by a social. Next slide, please. We're asked to look at what Libian was doing to increase the acceptance of their vouchers and what we could do to assist them. And we found that Libian had actually already surveyed landlords about what landlords were looking for Libian to do to make this, to, to increase acceptance of their voucher. They've already done some really good work around this. For instance, they've sped up their inspection process. They've created positions just, just for doing outreach to landlords and, and working with landlords and the tenants. They also established their own sign up bonus. And they started their own media campaign called hashtag Housing for Everyone. And when you see, when we get to the end of our, to our recommendations, that we have some recommendations of how we can even assist Libian in more further the good work that they've already done. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn this over now to Ms. Shalonas from the Attorney's Office to talk about legal challenges that we researched.
Yes, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So in the interest of time and because the, the legal cases that we, that we looked at are not particularly valuable from a presidential perspective for North Carolina, I'll just do a quick overview. I think the big takeaway from these is that there was always a quick challenge to a jurisdiction that adopted a source of income ordinance. And not only was there a quick challenge, but these cases took quite a while to get through the court system, often between three and five years. The only jurisdiction that had any kind of a win really just got a remand, meaning that the highest court in the state sent it back to the trial court to, to evaluate it on the merits of the argument. And there's no resolution in that case here. I, I would note that even in a home rule, excuse me, a home rule state like Pennsylvania, the Supreme Court in Pennsylvania determined that the source of income ordinance even exceeded the home rule authority in Pittsburgh. And with that, I will send it to, I believe it's Ms. Wyman, to discuss the survey.
Our landlord survey, if you could go to the next slide for me, Wendy, and go to the very next slide, I'm going to walk through precisely, we asked six questions and I'm going to walk through those questions here in just a moment. But I wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of who we surveyed. We surveyed a total of over 5,000, over 5,000 individuals. We, we sent out surveys to landlords who recently participated in our emergency rental assistance program. We sent out surveys to social serves list, that was about 4,000 people. We also sent out, we partnered with the Greater Charlotte Apartment Association. We sent surveys to 220 of their members. And I think you also maybe received a letter for, from them today or sometime over the weekend. And we also sent out surveys to our affordable housing developers. In addition, what you don't see here is we also sent out surveys to our, our six local subsidy providers. Those are providers like Salvation Army, Charlotte Family Housing, Crisis Assistance Ministry, and Supportive Housing Communities, or Roof Above, and our Way Home. So we tried to get as, as, as many, get the survey out to as many of our partners as possible. If you'll go to the next slide, I'll, here is where I will begin to walk through the six questions that we asked. So, so go, go forward, Wendy, please. Yes, thank you. And so we, we wanted to, to get as much information as we could. And so we started by asking on our survey, the first question was, what is the size of your rental real estate portfolio? And what I would point out to you is you can see here, 62% of the people surveyed, or the landlords surveyed, they had a portfolio ranging from 1 to 50 units. And then the, the next largest portion had portfolios with units between 101 to 500 units. And that's really important because we wanted to make sure that we got the smaller moms and pops, if you will, and we also got the, the people who had more units in this, in this community. So you can see kind of how those numbers panned out over the course of that survey, over the course of that question, I'm sorry. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. We also asked, does your portfolio primarily consist of single family or multifamily development? And so you can see here, the 1 to 50, and this makes sense, consisted mainly of single family units, which is good. The 51 to 500, mainly consisted of multifamily. And the same with those people who had portfolios of over 500 units. We went, if you'll go to the next slide for me, please. We asked, do any of your properties within the city of Charlotte accept subsidies, including housing choice vouchers? So subsidies, including housing choice vouchers. And so you can see the data here. The property owners with 100 to 50 units, 63% of them said, yes, they do. 51 to 500, 56% of them said, yes, they do. And then over 500 units, 65% of them said, yes, they do. If you go to the next slide for me, please, we went a step further and we said, what rental subsidies or vouchers do you accept? And again, housing choice vouchers is the most common and the, the largest rental subsidy that we have in our community. But in addition to housing choice vouchers, some commented they accept our, our home tenant based rental subsidy, subsidy assistant, our HUD VAS vouchers, those are vouchers for veterans. When we deploy ESG vouchers for rapid rehousing, they accepted the way, the Away Home Endowment, the key voucher from the state, and then rental subsidies provided through our HOPOA program. So again, we wanted to be inclusive here. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. So in terms of the feedback we received, and again, I'm not going to read this to you, but we, we tried to kind of theme it for you. We asked, if you do not accept rental subsidies, tell us why. What's the reason? What you'll see here in green is, again, I want to build on Mr. Wooton's point. And Libian has done some great work in, over the past several years in trying to increase, increase this. You can see kind of what we highlighted in green here is the work that CHA, that Libian has tried to, has worked to address. And so what I want to point out to you here is just a couple, couple of other things that they, that we believe we can build on. The inspections are too rigid and they take too long, and the lack of accountability of the tenant and the, and the program itself. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. We asked, if you do not accept rental subsidies, tell us why. What's the reason? Again, I'll, I'll just highlight some couple of things. You can see what CHA, what in Libian, I'm sorry, I promise I'm going to get that right, Mr. Meacham. Old habits are hard to break. The, the green is the work that in Libian has already done. So I would just point out, what we heard from landlords and property management is that they can readily find tenants without the hassle of the voucher process. And again, this is just, this is about the program itself. So it's not about in Libian, it's about the program. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. We asked, from their perspective, what do they believe are the pros and the cons of adding source of income protection to the city's Fair Housing Ordinance? The, the highlight here is, the pro obviously is that people believe there would be more housing opportunities for, for low income families. By the same token, we asked, if you'll go to the next slide, from your perspective, what do you believe are the pros and cons? When we talk about the cons, again, not to rehash what Libian, Libian has already done, but this gets to unintended consequences. And I think, Mr. Bakara, you really pushed us hard and I appreciate that in committee about what might unintended consequences be. And one of the things I'll point out here is that an intended consequence could be landlords raising rents above the fair market rent, rent rates that are allowed for housing choice vouchers by HUD across the city. If you go to the next slide for me, please. We continued on that question. One more thing I, I would, well, this just builds on it. Again, it won't be enforceable and it won't result in increased housing. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. We not only talked, we didn't just leave it with talking with property management and, and landlords, we also wanted to get, hear the voice of organizations. And so again, we talked with the Greater Apartment Association, their ED. We heard from the Apartment Association of North Carolina. We heard. from the Apartment Association of North Carolina, we heard from the National Apartment Association, the National Multifamily Housing Council, and the National Rental Income Council. And some of the issues that they shared are, the issue is not the source of income discrimination or the tenants, but it's the various aspects of the housing choice voucher program. And then the Greater Apartment Association, they noted that they are aware of the recent enhancement made by Enlivian, and that they are willing to participate in a city facilitated discussion with Enlivian, of course, to identify additional improvements that can be made to the housing choice voucher program. And with that, I'm going to turn back to Anna and to Willie to walk us through the SWOT analysis of, of, of a proposed ordinance.
Thank you.
Anna, maybe, maybe this is you, since Willie was having problems. Let's just do that.
Thank you, Pam. Again, we've provided slides for you to review, and then the team did a good job diving in on this SWOT analysis, but I just want to give you a, a overview of the highlights. I think from the strength side, the biggest strength that we have is that the existing infrastructure of the CRC, they have a 40-year history of experience and successes with fair housing enforcement and education. On the weakness side, obviously, the biggest one is that there's no authority in the state statute or our charter to expand the seven categories of protected classes, which means that we would need legislation and approval from the General, General Assembly to add that category. The concern would be that that might create an expectation in the community if the council were to adopt an amendment to the ordinance, that the, the new ordinance would fix the problem, even though there would be really a lack of enforcement ability with that ordinance. On the opportunity side, I think there are a number of opportunities here, not the least of which is that there is a new administration in Washington, DC, and we're hopeful that perhaps we might get some guidance from HUD and some movement on this issue out of Washington. Also, as reflected in the survey, there appear to be opportunities to provide education and greater awareness in the community regarding subsidy, rental subsidies, housing choice vouchers, and new and creative ways of increasing their use in the community. And I think that the big opportunity here is to explore some of those alternatives. And lastly, the threats, again, obviously, the General Assembly is unlikely, at least with the current makeup, to provide enabling legislation for the city to amend the ordinance. And based on the experience of many other communities across the country, it's likely there would be a very quick legal challenge to an amended ordinance that would include source of income. And it probably, we wouldn't have a lot of success in North Carolina trying to defend that at this point. And then lastly, and you can see that on the slide with threats, and Pam alluded to these, so I won't go back over it, but there are several unintended consequences that might result from the adoption of the ordinance at this point. And with that, I will pass it back unless Willie has anything he wants to add.
No, you did a great job, Anna. I think the, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are the exact things that we needed to share with council.
All right. Thank you both for that. So let me see if I can expedite this a little bit. Now we're at the landlord recommendations. And let me just preface this by saying, you all received a supplemental guide to this presentation, and so we have verbatim comments, and all of this information is in that supplemental presentation. In terms of the landlord recommendations, they, they, if I had to theme them, they, they, the five themes resonated. And the themes were inspections, and what I would point out there is that, what we heard is that we need to work on being realistic in the unit criteria. In terms of accountability, again, you can see in green what CH, what Enlivian is already working on. In terms of accountability, I would just add, the subsidy provider must hold the tenants responsible for damages. We heard that a lot from the survey and some recommendations. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. The third theme is tenant self-sufficiency. So there's, there was a request, recommendation around guaranteeing case management for the voucher holder, perhaps a financial coach, and then providing a path to self-sufficiency for the voucher holder. In terms of the financial perspective, simplifying the process for rent increases, eliminating the cap each year, making a rent increase automatic. Wendy, if you could go to the next slide for me, please. A few more financial recommendations, providing larger deposits, and then to the, to the extent that the payments can, to the landlords can be made faster. In terms of program, process, and administration, I would point out there that there was a recommendation that Enlivian should pay 100% of the rent to the landlord and then could collect the tenant's portion. That was a recommendation. And then what really, a big recommendation was having a more transparent process and the use of more automation for landlords who decide to participate in the program. So with that, I'll get into some, some of the alternatives that your staff recommends and some of the, the recommendations. The first thing that we recommend is that we adopt a policy requiring mandatory acceptance of housing choice vouchers and other forms of rental subsidy in all city-supported housing. And so as I've stated before, this happens to, currently happens in your housing trust fund-funded developments. We have already, the, your staff and your housing department, we're shoring up our community development block grant, our home dollars, our HOPOA, and our emergency solutions, where we are putting money in voucher assistance in those programs. We want to encourage and monitor changes to the housing choice voucher program at the federal level with the new administration. Again, Anna alluded to this, and so we're, we're hearing at some very positive talk come from the new administration about improvements to the housing choice voucher program. We also suggest and would ask of you to create or appoint an ad hoc advisory group to develop some further program enhancements and process improvements to the housing choice voucher program. We suggest, but you all should, should feel free to add to this list, that that group should consist of representatives from Enlivian, private sector landlords, property management professionals, the Greater Apartment Association. Recall, there note a few slides back, that they're willing to participate, subsidy, other subsidy providers, and then other people that you think should be a part of this ad hoc advisory group. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. And then, after this work is done, after the, the ad hoc advisory committee has had a chance to work, that if, if we have not seen, which I believe we all want, an increased use or acceptance of, of rental subsidies, including housing choice voucher programs, at that point, we would consider amending the fair housing ordinance to, to include source of income in, in that ordinance. And so if you go to the next slide for me, please, Wendy. So this is how, this is what we envision and how it would play out. So February to March, you all would appoint the advisory group, we would convene the group. March to May, a lot of work would get done. We, again, we've already began updating the city's documents, strengthening our language. Mrs. Watlington, thank you for, for really pushing hard on this. We would do some metric setting. I won't read this to you, but a couple of things that will really be important here is we need to quantify the number of unused and returned housing choice vouchers and other unused subsidies. And doing that, we need to determine if the unused subsidies were redeployed, right? So it might be one person didn't know how to use it, it got returned, another person understood better how to use it, that could inform our education. And then also, we need to identify reasons that the housing choice vouchers and those other rental subsidies are not used. So again, I won't read all these to you, but this, you can see the, the outline of the work that we plan to do between March and May. In May, we would, we would, we would finalize all of our metrics based on what we're learning. And then June through December, we would monitor to see if we're indeed, I'm seeing an increased acceptance of, of all rental subsidies, and then we would present our findings and recommendations to you. If at any point during this timeline where we feel like we're going faster, or we just see that this is not going to work, we would like to ask if we could come back to you, and we would also be willing to provide you updates on a periodic basis so that you would know how the work is, is going. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. I think I've pretty much wrapped it up. Just keep going, Wendy. Keep going, keep going, keep going. One more. Yep, and so again, the next steps, if we would like, we'll open it up for discussion, well, I'll turn it back to the mayor, and we would ask you to appoint the ad hoc advisory committee, we would convene the work, and then we follow the schedule that we just laid out to you. And so with that, I want to thank my colleagues, thank the ones that you didn't see tonight who also helped us in this work, and we are ready to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Graham, do you have any comments, or do you want to proceed? We've got a few council members already lined up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank the staff for the work that we put into providing the information for council's consideration. Again, I just want to reiterate the charge that the, the committee gave to staff and how they responded. I think they responded very appropriately. Again, the draft for proposed local SWOT ordinance, complete with a SWOT analysis, and you can see for yourself, for your considerations, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. You heard from the, the city attorney in terms of legal hurdles that we may encounter. You heard in reference to legislation that we do not have those type of authorities from state government or even within our charter, and you've heard the recommendations that staff has laid out for your consideration. So I'm, I'm very interested in hearing the questions from my teammates. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Eggleston?
You, Mayor. Sorry, I'm trying to MacGyver a, a charge from my iPad that is dying. A couple of questions. One for, the first one for Ms. Luenus, if she's still there.
Who are you looking for?
There she is, she's back on with us. We went through this a little faster than I could look at every peer city. Did your research indicate to you that there was not a single, is there not a single large city in a Dillon Rule state that has enacted one of these and ultimately been able to enforce it?
That is what the, well, so yes, in the sense that for the reported cases that we were able to find, that, that is, that is correct. There are a few jurisdictions that had specific authority in their state statutes, and so there are communities around the country that do have a source of income discrimination protection in their ordinances, but none that are similarly situated to how things operate in North Carolina.
So the ones that, that have been able to enact this successfully and defensively and enforceably have been in home rule states exclusively?
No, I don't think it's exclusive, and I know Warren and his team did a little more research for the, sort of the non-reported, you know, communities that are doing this that haven't necessarily been sued. But there are a couple of states that actually have specific authority in the general statutes. And so in those states, whether it's home rule or Dillon's rule, those communities can, can add this protection.
This is probably from Ms. Weidman. Obviously, the perspective of the property owners, the landlords, is critically important in this conversation. I didn't see much in there in terms of trying to survey residents, and, you know, I'm, I'm not surprised that we've only received three complaints about something that's not illegal. The police probably don't get a lot of calls for things that aren't crimes. So I'm just curious if we did, and it would be maybe anecdotal, but I'm just curious if we dug into, or we attempted to find those anecdotal stories from residents in our survey.
Yeah. So, Mr. Eggleston, we did not reach out to residents in particular, but I, what I would suggest, and I think it's a great idea, is if you all were to move forward with this ad hoc advisory group, that we do include residents in that, in that group to get their perspective as well.
The only other question around the data that we've got there would be, did the low response rate from the property owners concern us in terms of, and again, if I'm, if I'm reading this wrong, or we went through it more quickly than I was able to absorb it, feel free to correct me. The response rate seemed low from the property owners and the landlords. If it was that low, should there be some concern that maybe there was a self-selection process where people thought, well, if I'm one of the ones discriminating based on source of income, I'm sure as hell not going to answer this survey? And we might have gotten a somewhat distorted view because the people who are doing it right would probably be more inclined to answer that survey.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure about that conclusion, Mr. Eggleston, but what I would say to you is that, and I, and I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head. Well, for example, the National Apartment Association, they're a feder, they're, they are a federation of, of 153 affiliates, they have over 2,000 members. And so to the extent that, and we did, we, we heard from groups like that, I would just, I just want to point out their number, those numbers, so that you can see the wide representation. In terms of the National Rental Income Home Council, they have more than 23 million properties, and they include over 720,000 of those are in North Carolina. So I, I totally recognize that the response rate was low, but also will remind us that we heard from some larger organizations who represent large numbers of property owners.
And a lot of those are organizations that I think have some deserved credibility and probably are doing things the right way. You know, I'd be curious to know, and again, some of the anecdotal stories from residents might be able to help inform this, but it'd be curious to know if, when and where source of income discrimination is taking place, if it's taking place with larger entities or smaller, as you called them earlier, I think mom and pop landlords. I would assume the larger, larger organizations have been more mindful of this issue and probably have implemented some sort of processes or protocols that would help to minimize the number of times that's taking place within their units or their members' units or things of that nature. And they probably, in, in many cases, operate in multiple states where they might have to navigate places, both places that do and don't have these sort of protections. So they might have some uniform way that they approach it to, to accommodate the different laws that they have to abide by. But I don't, I don't think we can use people not calling in something that's allowed as too much evidence. But I'm, I'm also not interested in this council pursuing, or I'm not individually interested in us pursuing something simply for the sake of saying we did something if it ultimately doesn't address the concern or address the problem. So while I am certainly wanting to see us do everything we can as it relates to curbing any, any occurrences of source of income discrimination, I, I certainly want us to do that with our legal counsel's advice as it relates to what we can actually enforce, because if we put something on the books that we can't enforce, we're not doing it to help the residents, we're doing it because we think it looks good politically. So I, I hope we'll do as much as we can, but only what we can in, in that regard. So I think that's all my questions for now, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I have so many questions. You know, I'm so passionate about this subject. Full disclosure, I've been a Section 8 landlord for 18 years. So this is a, it, it's just disturbing to me that we have to have a political debate to protect our most vulnerable. I think we as councils should be doing everything that we can. I, I, I drove today and got off on Brevard or Bivard and saw the tents. So I think this is just a situation where we need to be, have all hands on deck, and if it, if it... And if it requires some type of ordinance specific to the city, that our legal department can protect. It's our duty. There's also reentry ordinance and so many barriers that we need to take a look at. So I just have some questions for Ms. Wideman. I'd like some clarification of facts for my colleagues who might not be as familiar with the housing choice voucher or homeless services. So Ms. Wideman, I do have a question, or several questions.
Yes, ma'am, I'm ready.
Thank you. So I asked in the earlier presentation about the statistical validity of the response rate, and I believe it was about 61% of responses for that subject. Are we considering a 3% response rate from landlords a valid sample?
So Ms. Johnson, this was intended to present you the information that we got, I mean, that we received. I think we could argue about what is a statistically significant or statistically relevant survey. What I would say is, all that we didn't receive in the survey, the survey results are what we received. Like I said, I alluded to the organizations and their representation, their members. But I also think that the beauty of, if you all decide to go down this road with the Ad Hoc Advisory Committee, that gives us an opportunity to invite more voices to the room to really figure out a way to do what I think we all want to do, is increase the acceptance of housing choice vouchers and do it in a way that we can really see results.
Okay, thank you. And one of the things that Willie said that, I'm sorry, I can't think of his last name right now, but he said that the CRC department had only received three complaints. Well, I would say that since I've been on council, I've heard from Enlivian and Habitat for Humanity on One MAC, and we all received hundreds of letters in support for this from the community. So I would, while the city might have only received three complaints, there's also a petition with over 1,200 signatures in support of the ordinance. So I don't want to minimize the fact that the city might have only received three complaints, that this is not an issue in the community. I also wanted to, if you can go back to the, a couple slides, there were some specific concerns from landlords. I think it was the, keep going. Yeah, if you, okay, maybe go back one more. Okay, so I just want to go, a couple questions. We know that Section 8 waitlist can be up to 10 years. We also know that the Section 8 housing choice voucher is transferable among states. So this is a very viable and desired housing subsidy for many people. 70% of individuals receiving the housing choice voucher, they work. So this is an, and so we know that affordable housing is challenging here. Here's an option, and we are allowing any landlords in the city to reject it. When we talk about source of income discrimination, we're also talking about individuals on social security, individuals on disability. So I'm just really concerned and just, I'm saddened that we wouldn't all do as much as possible. And I understand the legality, that's the only concern, but anything else, these anecdotal opinions from 3% of the landlord, if I add myself, does that increase the percentage? Because I don't have a problem with housing choice vouchers. Can we go to the next slide, please? The tenant self-sufficiency, right now, politicalides case management, and also education courses to their tenant. I could just go through a couple of these that simplify process for rent increase and simplify, I think, virtual options or something. Right now, you can have a virtual reinspection. There's direct deposit. If you're looking at the average rent for Section, for HCB, the average price that they pay for a three to four bedroom, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up everything, I saw between 1,400 and I think 2,700. So they do have allowance to pay market rent. I just think some of these concerns are so unfair. And if we are truly intent on upward mobility and reducing disparities, this is an opportunity for us to do that. Can you go to the next slide, please? Oh, and another thing I wanted to ask, that some of these concerns talk about tenant Is there a guarantee for damages for market rent apartments?
Yes, ma'am, in the form of that you will not get your lease, your deposit back. And you can also incur, you can also be charged additional damages as well.
And the same thing goes for Section 8 landlords. We can keep the deposit, and if there are damages, we can take the tenant to court. And the one thing that Section 8 offers, if you take the tenant to court for damages, they will lose their Section 8 voucher forever. So there's more accountability for renting to a Section 8 tenant than there would be for a private tenant, so I'm, or market rate tenant. So I'm just concerned with some of this language, that the damages and, you know, if that's some type of stigma surrounding Section 8 tenants. Because again, and as far as the deposits, the landlord has that right. The landlord has the right to screen their tenant. That's their responsibility to screen the tenants. So I think some real education to the landlords of what Section 8 or housing choice voucher is actually doing. I think a more fair sample, I think hearing from tenants, which I hope we do at the public meeting, and I think allowing a presentation from, in living in, at one of the neighborhood committee meetings, I think that that would be a fair representation of this option. Housing choice voucher is transferable, it's desirable for those who are, who can't afford housing here in Charlotte. And it's just, I mean, it's like the door is just continually closed to our most vulnerable residents. So I say it all, I have to say, you know why Iran was on an affordable housing? This is a problem. And to close the door and defer this any longer is a disservice to our residents, in my opinion.
And Ms. Johnson, just one thing, and you said a lot, and I certainly understand your passion, and I'm equally as passionate about it as well. What you've pointed out, though, is that there is lots of room for education on both sides. And so again, that is one of the opportunities I believe we have if we get the right people on this Ad Hoc Advisory Committee, again, to do what we all want to see done, is increase the acceptance of voucher and rental subsidies throughout this community. So again, thank you for that, and I hope that we can come to some agreement where we can get that education out and get that insight that we need on both sides.
But let me say, thank you for that. But do we know that there are landlords that are terminating leases for individuals who receive assistance through COVID, COVID funding, through the money that we gave and NC Hope? There are landlords that are terminating leases because people receive assistance. So 18 to 24 months is a long time. We have the ability, legally, again, I keep saying that, it's the caveat, obviously. But if we can create something now, I said, we put it on the table, let's do it. And then, first of all, we only heard from 3%, which is not even a valid sample. So I'd say we could create something. We could definitely create something, not just for developers who, or the tax credit, anyone who receives any public dollars. As James Mitchell used to say, public dollars are for public good. So when you're talking about a TIG or a, you know, CIP, or any funding from the city, any public tax dollars, which people in Section 8 pay their taxes, also that they would be required to not discriminate with source of income, but also reentry as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Phipps?
Can't hear you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Phipps? Mr. Phipps?
Yes, thank you. I guess in view of the work that Enlivian has done, looks like they've done a lot of work in this space. I guess I was struck by the fact, given this proposal, this recommendation, that we're looking at anywhere from 18 to 24 month timeline. In my way of thinking, I mean, that seems to me to be so protracted. I mean, you're almost talking about a full council term on something that we would consider to be an important issue. It seems as if, I mean, we've already concluded that any success, we don't have the authority from the legislature, legislature, and any attempt to get it would probably not be successful at this time. Have we even, I guess we broached the subject with them at some point? I mean, is this, has this even crossed the line to our legislative agenda or anything like that yet?
So Mr. Winston is on the line, or Mr. Bakari, and they headed up the legislative, headed up the legislative committee. So I'll invite one of them to speak to the legislative agenda.
Wow, I don't have a presentation prepared on our legislative agenda. I don't think Mr. Bakari does as well. But this is something that we have discussed. I'm going to actually try to reach out for a lifeline, Mr. Fenton, to see if he has that state legislative agenda and notes on the discussions that we've had in committee available to brief Mr. Phipps. Or it might be more appropriate to do that offline.
Yeah, I was just wondering, had it even been broached as a subject for any future consideration on the agenda or what?
Mr. Phipps, if I could remember correctly, and again, if I remember correctly, Mr. Fenton, when he presented this current legislative agenda, it was the recommendation, based on past discussions, to not include this on the state legislative agenda. But again, Mr. Fenton is the staff expert, so please, we will check in with him.
Okay. Now, given the timeline that you put, that you described as a potential, you know, as a recommendation from 18 to 24 months, do we have a goal? I see that we're in the mid-50s and some moving up to the mid-60s on, depending on the number of units that we sample. Do we have a goal of what, I know every incremental increase in the acceptance rate is good, but in that timeline, what do you expect to accomplish as far as moving the needle? I mean, what would you consider to be success? From 63% to, what, 70s or what? I mean, wouldn't it sound gold in trying to get this absent any kind of legislative ability to do so?
Yes, Mr. Phipps, thank you for that question. And so that is the beauty, again, and I don't want to harp on this too much, but that would be the beauty of having the Ad Hoc Advisory Committee around the table. You have landlords who actually have the units. We would have Enlivian, we would have city staff, we would have residents, for us to collectively and collaboratively come up with a goal that we believe that we could all achieve successfully. As your staff, I don't want to tell you an arbitrary goal, you know, and I think one of the things that Ms. Wadlington talked about in committee was, we need to make sure we set some metrics, right? And so I alluded to, we need to quantify the number of vouchers that go unused. Are they returned back and are they redeployed? We really just need to work with Enlivian to understand, if vouchers are returned and they're not redeployed, are they then project-based, right? And so that's important, because if they are project-based, that helps bring down the cost of the unit, and you ultimately create more project-based housing units, which ultimately are rented cheaper. So again, I think that work, that metric setting will occur in the Ad Hoc Advisory Committee. As I said, to the extent that we get done sooner, coupled with our periodic updates to you, we will be coming back to you. You know, if we do our work really well, perhaps we get done in 10 to 12 months. I don't know. But what I recognize is that you all have to appoint, we have to convene, we have to finalize our metrics, and then we have to actually deploy our process in the market. My hope would be to work with landlords who say, hey, I have units that I want to put in the program to accept vouchers, and we increase that. So it sounds like a long time, but there's a lot of work to be done to achieve the results that we want to achieve.
Thank you. But I still have the concern about that protracted timeline. I would hope that we could accomplish something in less time than that. But I do think, you know, the establishment of some sort of committee could be probably a good step to take. But the timeline is what's giving pause at this time. Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Mr. Winston?
Can't hear you, Mayor.
Mr. Winston?
Thank you. Ms. Wideman, how many more people right now would be in safe, secure, affordable housing if all vouchers that exist in our community were accepted tonight?
I can't give you an exact number, Mr. Winston, but we could probably all agree that there could be more, there would be more.
Are we talking about the tens, the dozens, the hundreds, the thousands, the tens of thousands?
I can't, I can't, I can't give you an exact number. I mean, you could say if we used all of the vouchers that we had, or if we decreased our waiting list, you could use that number. But I don't want to stand up here and give you a number that I can't defend.
What is our current waiting list?
I would have to check in with my colleagues at Enlivian. I don't know that number off the top of my head, sir.
Okay, well, I will, I will give staff credit. When you get into politics, the first thing they tell you to do is know your audience, know the room that you're talking to. And you definitely gave us a presentation that illustrates the type of political will and the difficult conversations that we would have to have if we were actually to take bold actions to eliminate source of income discrimination. And we know, I think we all know, that it would take a paradigm shift for this council to go that route. So I hope, I hope we will see through this and through the negativity and completeness of this presentation that many of my colleagues have pointed out. I would like to point out that North Carolina is a strange state legislatively and legally because it is, it is a state that has both aspects of home rule, but then, of course, a tighter than Dillon Rules state because of that preemption factor. However, preemption law would have to have a governor's signature on it. Have we engaged the Cooper administration about his views on source of income discrimination? And would our governor's office would be willing to support the municipalities of North Carolina in doing to ending it?
Your housing staff has not, Mr. Winston. I'm not sure if Mr. Fenton has at any point, but unequivocally, your housing staff has not. Your housing staff has, as demonstrated in the presentation, reached out to our colleagues like Raleigh, Asheville, Greensboro, our, what we believe to be some of the bigger cities in North Carolina to understand. cities in North Carolina to understand what they are doing and if they are looking to go down the path of adding sources of income to their fair housing ordinance. And as you saw in the presentation, none of them are considering adding it to their fair housing ordinance. Some of them are thinking along the same lines that we are.
I would just like, again, to point out, the staff presentation included anecdotes from the legislature as well as judiciary, but it has not taken in any account of what the executive branch would do or would support here. I think we need to go bold. I think we need to go very bold. In order to eliminate source of income discrimination, that's the only type of action that that can be taken. I do believe a recommendation number four should be recommendation number one. We need to make a bold definition of what source of income discrimination is and add it to our fair housing ordinance. We also have to be strong bold advocates for both, for all of our constituents here. That is the role of government. I've been engaging both renters as well as property owners specifically. I've been talking to some of the folks at the apartment association, and I do believe that they have valid beefs, but their beefs, I don't think are with the tenants. I think they are with the federal government, particularly housing and urban development and the contracts that facilitate these voucher payments. I believe a big problem I see is that the federal government has to be more efficient and a more efficient and flexible partner with contract holders, i.e. landlords. And I think it is our job to be bold advocates to Washington for them. So I think we, as has been said, we know a lot more than we led along here. So if one of the already barriers to accepting vouchers is the amount of red tape, I don't see how we help the problem by adding more red tape through another ad hoc committee after we've had so many committees that have dealt with this, and we have a city council as well as the ability to deal with many different aspects of this through our different committees and their work. For example, you know, our city's housing framework, which we have recently affirmed as we kind of have been looking through things, dealing with COVID relief, Objective 2, Strategy 3, particularly Points 2 and 3, spell out that in order to preserve the affordability and prove the quality of existing rental housing stock, we must support extended use of rental subsidies and vouchers, align local resources with policies that support voucher use, as well as coordinate with Charlotte Housing Authority, aka now Inlevian, and other local voucher programs on opportunities to use vouchers to support target populations, particularly in areas with strong pathways to opportunities. To me, that already says that staff has the authority to go out and explore recommendation one, as well as recommendation two, whether that be through an outside committee or just through staff work. So I'd like to kind of get an idea of the type of work that has been employed since our adoption and affirmation of the housing framework and why we need additional authorities to take this step that we already had the task, a task force, stakeholders groups, tons of community engagement. Why do we need to do this again to do something that we've already affirmed?
All right, thank you, Mr. Winston.
I'm not done. I was, I was, I'm not done. I was, I was, I was.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were completed. So please continue.
That was a question.
Yep. So, so, Mr. Winston, let me, let me make, let me try to answer. You said a lot there. So your question was, why do we, why are we proposing, I believe, this ad hoc committee if we already have the ability to do some of this work? And so you are correct. We reaffirmed our housing framework. That's, that's where we say 20% of all housing trust fund awarded projects have to accept vouchers, and they have to have units in there for individuals who earn 30% and below the area median income. You all also took another step forward that's going to help with this when you did your NOAA rental subsidy program. That enabled us to have some units, some additional units for 30% households. What your framework doesn't, well, let me say it this way. We have not had an opportunity to really sit down in a, in a, in a, I would say, in a more holistic way with landlords to really hear from them about what it would take. And that's, that's what we hope to do in this process. I will remind us that we do partner with Social Serve. They have one person now that is a housing navigator, and he's, he's yielded some really great success by doing just this. That is his job, is to go and to work with landlords to understand why they don't and what they would need to do. One of the things that I would hope that's come out of this is perhaps we would put some funding from a city perspective to help create more of those people. That's just one thing that could come, could come out of it. So we, we, you also talked about city supported project developments, and so that's why we put that in there is we're working right now to ensure that not only trust fund dollars, but other, the other city housing dollars. We have not had a conversation yet, but that's one of the things we want to do through this process. And I would argue we could do this with even, is talk about folks who are receiving TIGs to Ms. Johnson's point, don't know the answer, don't know if that's where we will land out. So I think we've done some work, but I do think through this process, getting some other voices like residents, like property owners around a table, we could yield even more successes.
Well, again, I would just like to let the community look back to that housing framework. There was a lot of work done to engage all types of folks, including residents in this work. I, I, I would, I had a conversation, it was a half hour conversation with the apartment association. We are very easily able to identify places within the contract between landlords and the federal government that need work now. And that if we were to take a bold stance up to Washington, we're going up there next month, of ways that we can advocate for changes, I think that's, that's the role that we need to take. If we engage with those landlords in the intergovernmental committee, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't come up with something in short order that we can engage, for instance, invite the new Housing and Urban Development Secretary down here to Charlotte to meet with with residents and talk and work through these things. In the meantime, while, while the federal government gets its act together, we should partner with our local, we should lead, but also engage other government entities like the county and state to stand up local support to fill the administrative, financial, and inspectorial gaps that come from the current relationship between landlords and, and the federal government. I think that is where one of the biggest cruts of this problem lies. And then, instead of dealing with that, we continue to put it on, on residents about screens that get broken and windows and children flushing things down toilets, and that is what is rejecting people from living in safe and secure housing. So I think, again, I just want to reiterate, I think recommendation four needs to move up the top of the list to recommendation one, and it should not be determined based on the, this arbitrary success of any other recommendation. I think we should definitely adopt a policy requiring mandatory acceptance of housing choice vouchers, but we have to go, we have to look broader than that. We need all forms of sources of income to be accepted. I don't think we should have an ad hoc advisory group. I think we, city council can do its work if we have intentional use of our, our existing meeting schedule, including our committee structure. And I think we need to go beyond encouraging and monitor changes on the federal level. We need to resolve, this city council can resolve as to what those changes we need to see, and then we go and build coalitions around the state and around this country to put pressure on the federal government to be responsive in much, much faster than 18 to 24 months. Thank you.
So thank you. I just want to do a time check here. We have the other agenda items. I don't think we have any speakers signed up, but I just want to make sure that we are all okay with continuing because this is, was a discussion to ask for those things that you want to change or approve or change about the committee's recommendation so that the committee could take this back and get ready for council discussion or having it on an agenda, I'm assuming. So I'm just trying to figure out if, I think everybody has taken an interest or a position on it, and we're capturing that, I believe, for all of that. So, Mr. Graham, we can proceed. I think we've got three additional council people to speak, and then I guess the question will be, do we go back to committee with us for the, after you hear the discussion?
I have one more question for Ms. Whitman. Did you ask if landlords accepts, accepted subsidies before they started accepting COVID relief money?
Yes, sir, we did.
What was that response?
So, so we asked, and I want to be clear, Mr. Winston, we asked, do you accept rental subsidies, including housing choice vouchers?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ashmira?
Sorry, but did we ask if they accepted, if they accepted subsidies prior to their acceptance of COVID relief dollars?
We did not ask that question specifically. We asked the question, do you accept rental subsidies, including housing choice vouchers? I don't want to make an assumption, but COVID subsidies are new to the world, and so...
I think it's a relevant data point to see what the status, the true status quo is of landlords out there and as our constituents.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Whitman, thank you so much for sending, sending us this presentation. So we have a opportunity to do it prior to the council meeting. I certainly appreciate that. I hope that's the practice we can have moving forward for all our presentations. So some of my questions have already been addressed here. Where, Ms. Whitman, you acknowledged early on where this issue, when it comes to income source discrimination is much larger in scope than just the housing choice voucher program. I understand that's one of the largest rental subsidies. However, a lot of, a lot of folks rely on social security income, disability income, even financial aid for students to pay their rent. So have we, I did not see any data on that. Can we get data on that? We certainly have heard in the news report, people being discriminated against because of their social security checks or because of the disability income. So it would be great to have data points for those?
So, so Ms. Ashmira, I hear your request, and we will honor that. The one thing that I do have to just say to the group is that there is such thing as survey fatigue, right? And so we will send, we can send these surveys back out, we can ask these questions. You know, I can't promise you how many respondents we will get, but, but I do believe that there is power in getting folks together to talk, whether that be in a virtual environment these days or around the table. So we will try to get you the additional data that you're requesting.
I appreciate that. And also, if we can be more comprehensive in where we send these surveys out, which includes where we are being intentional in including housing providers as well as tenants so that we are getting comprehensive data set back. I know that my colleagues had raised these concerns around the 3% response rate, and I share the same concern here, and that's why we need to be even more intentional about getting higher percentage in response rate and sending it out to other groups in addition to the housing providers. So my, I know there was, can we go to slide number four here?
Slide number four, Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, ma'am. And I know Mr. Agelston had alluded to this earlier, where it couldn't be a reason where we are not seeing any complaints because there are no protections in place?
So, 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 Ms. Ashmira, one of the things, and I'm not sure if Mr. Rattford was able to point that out in here, but we, we talked about the three complaints, and that's small. And so I understand that. The three complaints that we received over the five years, Mr. Rattford shared with us is that two of those complaints that he received, he could have investigated based on race, which is already included. But when asked if those, if the filers of those complaints wanted to, him to proceed with the investigation based on race, they elected not to move forward. So I do just want to point that out, is there, that those two could have been, two of the three could have been further investigated. But you're pointing to a problem, I think Mr. Winston has said it, Ms. Johnson has said it, is we, perhaps the reason we're not seeing more complaints is because there is an opportunity to educate people, particularly residents. They may not know that they can file a complaint. And so we do believe that, and Mr. Rattford is prepared to increase the source of income education. And if he's still on the line, if I've misstated any of that, please correct me.
Pam, 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 I hear you, and you are exactly correct. I think one of the things that you, that we all need to be considering in this discussing, you all, is that at this point, we have not built a business case for adding source of income discrimination to the local fair housing ordinance. And I think we have talked about this ad hoc advisory group. I think you used the, this, this ad hoc advisory group to actually begin to build the business case. I don't know if it takes three months or six months or year or two years, but you can use it for that purpose. Now, when it comes to this issue of source of income discrimination, it sort of reminds me of AIN. We don't see it, but we know that it's there. And so we just have, we have to do a better job of finding out whether this type discrimination is in fact occurring in sufficient numbers in our community. And we do that, as you have indicated, Ms. Whitman, through education and outreach, through additional surveys and having conversations, as someone had mentioned earlier, with tenants to see what their experiences are compared to what we're hearing from landlords. So we can, we can talk about this from now and forever. If we don't build the business case for doing it, then we, then we're not going to be able to do this. So let's, 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 let's keep up, let's, let's, let's appoint this ad hoc committee. Let's make one of their charges to build the business case for doing this if we think that that type discrimination is in fact happening in this community.
I think if you're looking at, if you're looking at the source of income discrimination, and if you're looking at housing choice voucher program, you can just ask Inlevian because they have, I have served on former, well, it, it used to be Charlotte Housing Authority. I've served on Charlotte Housing Authority Board before serving on city council, and we have often gathered the data where residents were not able to get housing, even though they had the voucher in their hands, they were not able to get housing because there were housing providers who didn't accept it. I think that's also one of the sample set that you could tap into where survey all the tenants who have attempted getting housing using the voucher or who are still waiting list. So I think that's the population we need to reach out to when we get another comprehensive data set that includes social security, disability vouchers, and other vouchers that are out there.
Ms. Ashmira, I'm sorry, I just want to go back to that. You raise a great point, and I just want to remind you on slide 41 particularly, that is one of the things we want to do, is we want to, first of all, we want to quantify the number of vouchers that are going unused. are going unused and that are being returned. We want to understand that number. We want to understand, are they redeployed, being redeployed? And if they are being redeployed, how are some people successful, others are not? We want to identify a group of landlords who are willing to accept these. And we want to make sure all of, as many, including INLIVIAN, market rate developers, we want to understand if they are indeed accepting housing choice vouchers. So we want, I think we're all, we have, we all have this amount of passion and we're trying to do the same thing. We're just saying it a little bit differently.
Yes. And I, I think Ms. Wiedman, you are absolutely right. We are all saying the same thing. We all want to protect our residents from being discriminated against based on their source of income. But how we go about it, it's an important step. I know some of my colleagues have pointed out earlier, especially Mr. Fitz, around the timeline, and I agree with him. I think we need to do a better job in terms of the timeline, especially with what we are seeing with our horrible housing crisis, to get to the bottom of this issue. I have a couple of more questions here. On slide number 28, you had mentioned that it's not enforceable. I know that cities like Atlanta, that is also in Dillon Rule State, they have passed this ordinance. So maybe this might be, this might be a question for Anna. So if city like Atlanta, who is in a Dillon Rule State, have passed an ordinance, if it's not enforceable, why in the, why would you have an ordinance?
So, so Ms. Ashmira, let me take a stab at that and then Anna can come back. And I'm glad you brought that up. So I, I participate in what's called the Southeast Housing Coalition. And so that is, that consists of my counterparts, Atlanta is included in that coalition. When we first started doing our research there, they were kind enough to spend time talking with, with, with me about this. And so what they, you're right, they passed an ordinance, but their counterparts had the same complexity. They have an ordinance that they cannot enforce. In fact, their legal has told them that they cannot enforce it. In fact, their legal department says that they don't support the ordinance. What they intended to do, what the staff intended was that, that they would do what we're intending to do is that they support, they have an ordinance that suggests, that says that people who accept Atlanta's housing dollars must accept housing choice vouchers, but they passed an ordinance, it is not enforceable.
I understand. So I think that points to Ms., to Councilmember Johnson's point about, could we look at entities that accept public dollars, such as housing trust fund dollars, or even, or even TIC, or other public funding, could we enforce it there? I think that would be the follow-up question for me there. Other questions I have is around the enhancement to the program itself. From my time on Housing Authority, now it's INLIVIAN, I, I'm pretty certain that any enhancements that we recommend has to go through HUD for an approval. So what kind of authority does city council have there to enforce, to enforce additional enhancements to the program?
Is that for Ms. Chalones or is that for, for me, Ms. Ashmira?
Doesn't matter. Whoever wants to answer it.
If I understand the question, I, I think we can enforce any conditions that we place on our partnership agreements, our financial partnership agreements with housing providers is certainly enforceable. If you're talking specifically about the Section 8 guidelines and rules, I don't really know the answer to that question. That would, that would probably be something that INLIVIAN would have to answer because the city of Charlotte doesn't, isn't directly involved in the administration of Section 8 vouchers. But my understanding is that there is some flexibility that housing authorities can get working with HUD in the way that they administer. And there may be, there may be somebody on, on, in this meeting that knows more about the, the ins and outs of that than I do.
So to follow up on that, Anna, thank you. We are all, we are both on the same page here, that certain housing authorities, if they're moving to work or certain status, they have more flexibility than others. Do we have someone here from INLIVIAN? Because I know there have been multiple questions that have come up for INLIVIAN. So I want to give them an opportunity to respond to that.
So Ms. Ashmira, we don't have INLIVIAN as a part of this conversation. But what I, what I think you're alluding to is one of the flexibilities that they have as a move-to-work housing authority is that they can charge more than the fair market housing rent to increase the acceptance of housing choice vouchers. And again, I want to acknowledge that they, they are doing some of that today. And that is noted in the supplement that we sent to you. We still face a dilemma, though. They can charge up to 150%, I believe it is, of the fair market rate. In, in, in some instances, if that would still not be enough to increase, to significantly increase the amount, the acceptance of vouchers. So again, those are the things that we want to certainly partner with INLIVIAN on. And then if we can collectively go, if we, if we are still not seeing that increased utilization rate, we built the business case, someone said that earlier, where we can go to HUD, we can go to the legislature and say, we did all of these things. We tried to use every tool we could at a local level to get this done. And we, we have built that business case. So what we want to do again is we want to work collaboratively with, with, with our, with our market rate community who has the units that we need. INLIVIAN only has a certain number of units. The greatest preponderance of the units is with the market rate community. And so we want to work with them to, to do this work.
Yes. So I, I think when we have our next session on this, I would like to also see INLIVIAN being present. So some of these questions can be addressed directly by them. So whenever we have our next session, make sure to invite someone from INLIVIAN so we can get direct answers on some of these questions. But you are absolutely right, where we have to work with them to figure out how we could address some of the concerns that have been raised by housing providers. And some of their, some of their concerns are valid. And I saw the presentation, I went through the presentation you had emailed us, and I saw the number of items that have been addressed by INLIVIAN. And they have incorporated some of those recommendations into the implementation in last couple of years, which is a great start. And maybe we can even do more to address the housing crisis that we have in our city. And I'm, I'm going to conclude here with just one part. I know we have taken a deeper dive into this, and that is great. But I, at the end of the day, the question becomes, who do we want to be? Do we want to be a city that discriminates against people based on their source of income, whether it be social security, housing choice voucher program, disability, financial aid for students, whatever the source may be, irrespective of what the state says, ultimately, the question we have to answer is, who do we want to become? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Watlington?
Sure. I've got a few things. Firstly, I just want to reiterate what many of my colleagues have already said and what Mr. Rattford said, and certainly what we can see right here on this slide, is where it says, "Section 8 specifically is known to be onerous and therefore avoided." We know that source of income discrimination exists in our city. And I've said this before, I'm severely disappointed that we don't have a piece of data that can validate what we all know is true. To Councilmember Ashmira's point in regards to what INLIVIAN has already done, I would ask, I'm assuming that Fulton Mutcham is watching, go ahead and just send the data. Rather than wait for this ad hoc committee, if you have it, just send it to us right now. And that, I think, would help cut down some of this timeline. Again, I'll reiterate that what concerns me about the information that's been shared is that it has not at all captured what's actually happening to people with vouchers and what is the impact. Ultimately, we can talk about the legalities of putting together an ordinance, but at the end of the day, the real pain point is the impact that it has on our residents in this community. And the, every day that goes by where we haven't done something is a day that they're still experiencing this issue. Obviously, we know that if we put together an ordinance that is not enforceable, that doesn't help either. So I'd also like to reiterate what some of my colleagues have said in that what, whatever we can do to actually reduce the impact would be preferable. If you could go to slide 35, or you didn't even have to, I think it's already been spoken about. But I'm just very, very concerned about some of the recommendations that have come from the landlords. When I look at things like going to their homes quarterly, make sure that they know financial literacy, make sure their children are in school and doing well, this, this in and of itself feels like source of income discrimination. So I, I hope that we are not walking away with these recommendations as marching orders because many of them here, I think, need to be challenged. And I would not be supportive at all of pursuing it down a path or allowing any resources to go work on some of these items. I find some of them frankly offensive. When I think about the strengths that were listed in the SWOT analysis, it seems that those are more about our current program rather than source of income discrimination specifically. So I would have liked to hear, to Councilmember Eggleston's point, for the cities that have been successful, though we understand that their circumstances are different than ours, I would love to know what their metrics look like and how their source of income discrimination ordinance has reduced their issues in terms of being able to use their vouchers. I think that's a key piece of the information that we still don't have. That's really what would tell us whether this is worth our energy or not, is if where they are and where they are successfully implemented, do they work? So I would love to see that information. In regards to the unintended consequences slide, that is another one where I just question the credibility of some of the items that were listed there. Some of them seem to be hyperbole, if you will. So I just want to make sure that as we're putting together the information that we, that we, make sure that we've got an objective view of what our options are and what the challenges are, but also what the upside is. And when it comes to recommendations, the staff recommendations, one thing I'd like to offer up for, for feedback from Ms. Wiedman or others is I'd love to include in our required housing, not only the housing that has been funded partially by the city, but also housing that requires city rezoning. That is also a public investment. If it needs to be rezoned in order to be built, I feel like that is a perfect place to also require that they accept housing choice vouchers.
Ms., Ms. Wat-
Let's, I think we, I want to just get the questions down. It's very, getting pretty late, and I've got a number of other people. I think Mayor Protem, no, Mr. Newton?
Excuse me, I'm not finished. I was asking a question.
I'm sorry. When you looked down, I thought that you were done. So my apologies. Ms. Watlington, please continue.
I was actually asking a question of Ms. Wiedman.
Yeah. So Ms. Watlington, I'm, I'm sorry. I want to make sure I understood your question. Your question was you offered up for us to, to, to look at include where, where housing needs a rezoning to, in exchange for that public investment, having them include, accept housing choice vouchers. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And so what I would say is I have that noted. I'm going to make sure, before I promise you something that I can't deliver, I've got Mr. Jaiobah in the back, I believe, and I've got Ms. Chalones on the line, as well as the other attorneys. And so I, we will have that discussion and we will follow up with you.
Okay. And then the other piece in regards to the ad hoc group, just again, whatever we can use that INLIVIAN already has in place, I think that would accelerate the timeline. Also, in regards to the utilization piece, when it comes to a goal, while I can appreciate that the ad hoc committee can give us the data to help guide us, I do believe that it is on the council to set that goal. And it can be something simply as 50% reduction in the unused vouchers. So I would offer that up as a starting point or even a stretch goal. So if you all could return with what would have to be true in order to achieve that, we can determine whether or not that's a realistic goal. Okay?
Thank you. I got that. So that's, that's good.
Okay. And then finally, I just wanted to really challenge us as a council. I heard a lot of energy around what we can do to push the state and push the federal folks. I would have loved to have seen that in the legislative agenda, given particularly Mr. Winston's passion for it as one of the co-chairs. I, I, I just, I hope that this season or this session, we really leverage our existing processes to incorporate some of those things. Because now that the General Assembly has already, has already gone into session, we're behind the eight ball. So whatever we can do going forward to not miss those opportunities, that I certainly would like us to be bold, not only in activism, but also in our policy and our approach to it. I did ask in the, in the committee meeting, specifically what the state level strategy was, to piggyback on Councilmember Fitz's question, what has the state level done? Has there been any update to my original question?
So, so Ms. Watlington, I think the short answer is no. Again, we checked in with our colleagues around the state. There is no state kind of led action from my housing colleagues around the city about going to the legislature to pursue adding source of income to their fair housing ordinance. The response that we got is that they had a number of other things that they are considering that are, that they did not want to jeopardize. So that's the best answer I can give to you. We're happy to take another crack at it if, if, if we need to.
And if I can add to that, Ms. Wiedman, we, we said very early in the discussion that going to the state was a non-starter. Even the advocates who are pushing this forward had conceded that. It is very problematic to get this authority from the state in its current makeup. And so we discussed that. I think Mrs. Dana is somewhere in the building. I think even sent an email or a report to that effect as well. We certainly can do it. But again, you know, one of the things we were trying to do was to alleviate barriers that we know that was there. And part of the rationale for the, those who are encouraging us to do a local ordinance, because they, they do realize that getting the authorization needed from Raleigh would be problematic. Secondly, I'm not sure that the governor would play in this field at all. Just thinking out loud in terms of some of the, the conversations that I'm hearing, and the fact that we have a new administration coming on board, it's going to take them about 12 to 18 months, really, to see any significant policy change that might impact source of income specifically, which goes right with the timeline that staff has recommended, which could be amended. That's an option as well. But I think Willie made the best argument all night, and is why I think staff made the recommendation for the ad hoc committee, is that we have to develop the business case for it. And if we can do that, then we should do the ordinance. But again, I think Ms. Wiedman said right up front that, you know, all we got to do is add two words in the current ordinance as it exists today, and it's done.
Okay. So Ms. Wiedman, thank you for that. I would like to see Mr. Finn's report again. If I missed it, I apologize. I'd like to see it. My question was really about what our delegation and what the legislature is initiating, not what the other cities are initiating. I'm clear, from what you've shared, certainly that sounds familiar. What I'm asking is anybody in the legislature driving this at all? And what are they doing? My concern is that we're not sure. Regardless of what we think the probability of success is, we need to identify who's doing work at that level. And that's the piece that's missing for me. I do believe that regardless of what the General Assembly is doing, I don't think that that absolves us of doing the right thing. And we, there's certainly a place for- And we, there's certainly a place for understanding and reading the tea leaves, if you will, from a legal standpoint, but I don't, I don't think that anybody here is saying or advocating for us washing our hands. We need to put the onus on the state to do the right thing, and we do that by doing our right thing. And to Councilmember Graham's point, and I'll finish with this, it, this timeline certainly can be amended. It's being recommended. So what I've heard very clearly here today is that the direction is that this timeline needs to be shortened. When I think about how do we get in position to actually put something in our legislative agenda, it would seem to me that we would need this timeline to be shortened in line with that. So instead of December 2022, we would need December 2021. And I'm not sure if that needs to go into a motion to be put into effect, but that's certainly what I'm, what I'm hearing and what I would ask in terms of adjusting the timeline.
Ms. Watlington, I, I would like to say that I think that after this discussion, it's been a great discussion of a policy issue that the council has to resolve, and I'm going to send it back to committee. So I don't think we need a motion. I think we need to get those questions out on the table. And, you know, as I said, this is the kind of discussion we ought to be having at a strategy session. The committee voted unanimously to bring it forward, and this is the day, the week we would ordinarily have it presented and then put on the agenda. But obviously, we are not ready for that. And so my, my suggestion is that we actually do start thinking about this. But Mr. Newton, if you're, I want to make sure you have all of your questions and points made, Ms. Watlington, before we go to Mr. Newton.
Yes, ma'am, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Newton?
Yes, ma'am, madam, yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Newton, you're breaking up. It's like the, the, we can't hear you clearly.
Can you hear me better now? Better?
No, you have, it's like cracking in between your syllables.
Back now?
Huh?
Or now?
No.
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me back now?
Mr. Newton, it's not an audio issue, it's a connection issue, I think.
I don't think we can hear you very well. You're frozen now. You're frozen.
Um, can you?
It's internet, dude.
So, Mr. Newton, we're gonna, we're gonna put you in through your phone and, and do it that way, okay?
Okay. Okay, can you call me?
What?
You can call me.
Asking staff to call him.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, it's a little bit better. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you again.
You can't again?
Nope. No?
No, no. So no, now, no? Now?
Not, whenever that happens, you just fade from the screen and we, and you break up.
Perhaps we just let him finish and then...
I think he wants to be heard, and I just want to make sure he is. I'm sorry. Mr. Newton, can, it's, it's gonna take about five minutes for us to work on it, so...
Madam Mayor, maybe while we're bringing him up, I just want to reiterate for the council, I've heard several times tonight, kind of the landlord, the recommendations that you saw. And so we, we wanted to provide you the verbatim responses in this and, and in your supplement. Please understand, these are not staff's recommendations. We, we are, these are not staff's responses. We are sharing information that we heard from our landlords. So we, that, that's all it is. We're not taking one side or the other. We're simply sharing with you all the data.
And, and I think it's fair to say that sometimes we hear things that we don't necessarily like from people when they have the opportunity to present a question like that. And it may not be something that we feel comfortable with or that we see through it a different way, but it is the reality of the rental market, and this was done, was this done pre-COVID?
This was, we, we, we got the charge from the committee in October, so we were, we were in COVID.
Part of all of this. And so I think that you might have seen the frustration that many people feel about just the pandemic. I don't know what it is, but I think that generally, these things have been stated over and over again about the section, the choice vouchers, about how the landlords feel. And sometimes it's not every landlord, it's just the person who had that one, you know, remember that they used to say if somebody says something negative about you, it takes seven times before somebody changes it? I can't remember who, whether that was in Good to Great or whatever. But some landlords have had a bad experience, and it might take seven years to get over it. And that just may be where we are. But I see Mr. Bakari now, before we, everyone has spoken, this is going back to committee. And after, I think after everyone has spoken, I'm calling it an end for the discussion. This is a strategic item that will go to committee and go back to committee. So the people that have not spoken will be, Mr. Newton, are you, are you okay now? Mr. Newton?
Can, can you hear me now?
No. It's, it's, I don't know what's going on. It's bad. It's bad.
Can somebody call me? Can I have my phone?
Are you on your phone now?
I, if there was a number for me to call.
Okay, we're gonna go to Mr. Bakari.
Somebody call him. He doesn't know the number to call.
Somebody, yeah, somebody just please call him. Yes.
Mr. Newton, they have tried to call you.
They have tried to call him, Mr. Bakari. So let's go to Mr. Bakari, and then we'll come back to Mr. Newton. Mr. Bakari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think we can all start with one statement, which is, everyone on council and staff cares about this topic and wants it to happen. And, and I mean, we, we fight for affordable housing and everything, which this is part and parcel of that solution. So I, I just, I think that goes without saying, but, you know, I, I just want to make sure the entire community hears us all say that. I actually, I have maybe just a slight challenge to this going back to committee, however, I would defer to the committee chair's opinion on that. But the whole premise why we voted it out of committee, with people having different feelings probably in the back of their minds, however, I think what made it a unanimous vote out was, we didn't have enough information to make any kind of decision. So we were 100% certain, at least I'll speak for myself, I am 100% certain, this is a waste of time on any legislative agenda that we have today for the North Carolina General Assembly, because it is a nonstarter. Like, full stop, we're not going to do anything with it. And in fact, unless we do more pre-work, we'll poison the well with other things we're going for right now. So the premise on moving it out was, we're not going to learn more of what we don't know while it's in committee, and there was a study group that was supposedly going to go and do that. And whether you were 100% behind whatever the answer was, or you weren't sure what the proposition was at that point, we all agreed, yeah, more information would be helpful. So the, the premise here is, and I use Councilman Graham's own words again, which is, we need a business case which says, this is why this makes sense. I, I had big concerns about unintended consequences of, we all feel good about doing something on the top end, and then there are real case studies out there that show rents rise on the back end of that. And does it net out affordability and, and the benefits that come? I don't know, but I certainly wanted to have that conversation before we move forward. So I'm not convinced going back into committee will actually solve anything unless, unless that's just a way where this study group is then going to be accountable to bring something back. But, but I, I do think whatever that path we end up choosing is, we need to be real clear that we're not trying to figure out how to jam something through within a couple days or weeks, like, it's literally impossible right now. There's no chance we can do it. So if we want to do it, we've got to make a case that we could go sell. And either we sell it to a new federal administration that's behind it, and in a year or two, they'll be ready to get behind it, or we figure out a way to sell it to the General Assembly, of which I'm down for that. But it's got to be justified. We have to look at the unintended consequences. And I think most importantly, we have to think about those, those, the audiences and folks that were there. I actually feel exactly the opposite about, maybe not the wording of some of it, but by the perspectives of, of the, of the homeowners and the, and the apartment owners and things. Because the fact of the matter is, we're not trying to, to just have a, a home solution or rental solution or a voucher solution. We're trying to create upward mobility. So we may call it, and it may not seem right when it says financial coaching or whatever, but what we're really talking about is comprehensive wraparound services that enable folks that are there to get out of there and move forward. Now, whether the homeowners and apartment owners felt like, you know, they were in good faith saying that, or they just wanted someone more potentially long-term secure that would be renting from, I don't know. I won't speak for them, but I'll speak for myself. I want that stuff kept into our conversation, because to me, that's the whole crux of this. We're not trying to solve housing or vouchers or rentals. We're trying to solve upward mobility. Unless we provide people the wraparound services necessary to complete the entire thing, all we're doing is adding a subsidy that there will be a group of people, that that subsidy now is what they need, and we need more subsidies for the next set, when we should be arming them for upward mobility. So I think that's a very important part of the conversation. I'll defer to the chair and the mayor on should this go back to committee, but I, I don't know that that's the right answer.
That, that may not be the right answer, but right now, we have no answer. Out of the committee, at least two of the council members that voted to support this effort have raised different models of asking how it be done. So I don't know how the committee got it out, but what we're, what I'm saying is, you now have the full council's questions about it. You have the full council's sentiments and, and perspectives on it, and it's been a great discussion. And I think that there are three questions that I would say, do we try to create a business case for this effort? Do we want to be a city that raises hope with no enforcement, like Atlanta? Or do we want to actually get something done in terms of, and how do we get it done? So I'm just saying, I think that we've got some options that the count, the committee can actually raise some big questions, you know, like, do we want to do a business case? Do we want to make sure that we look at those unintended consequences that would make a difference? And do we want to have the ability to do this in a way that is enforceable and, and works for our, our residents, especially those who need to have the ability to find a place to live? So I'm, I'm still suggesting that it go back to committee, because those are big questions. It's not whether or not what the landlord said or whether or not we have wraparound services. Until we come to some of these large issues and answer them, then we can't move forward. So Mr. Newton is now on. Mr. Bakari, do you have anything else to add?
No, I mean, I, I, I was just trying a little bit to defend why it came out of committee. And if the answer is, this, this, this study group that's got 12 to 18 months of work ahead of it, is going to spend that time reporting back to the committee, and that's what you and the chair both feels right, okay, that's fine. But I, it seemed like we were, we had a lot more questions than answers and a lot higher of a mountain to climb.
I, I would agree.
Fair for normal committees to like, in a short term, take on, and it needed something more to even get us, I mean, because I think it's, it's damn near impossible is the best way I can say it, unless we have a severe, like, somebody's focusing on this like it's its own company they're launching. Because, I mean, it's impossible.
And I, and I, I agree with you, but I think you've got to focus on some of the questions that you have to agree to, some of the big questions, like, do we want to have something that's enforceable? Do we want something that avoids the unintended consequences? And do we have a business case to make that would be defensible to accomplish those things? But I, I'm gonna go, Mr. Graham, do you mind? I'm gonna let you wrap this up at the end, but I need to get Mr. Newton. Mr. Newton on phone, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Newton.
Hello, everyone? Can you hear me now?
Yes. Thank you for this.
Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you so much for your patience. And I have the worst internet connection, I, I, I think, you know, ever. So anyhow, I did have a question. Is it a question for Protem or for Councilmember? Well, and I just wanted to ask about the Atlanta ordinance. From, from what I understand, Georgia, much like us, is a Dillon Rule state. Atlanta, in that regard, is very similar to us. They did pass an ordinance pertaining to, to source of income discrimination and/or included an amendment within their existing discrimination ordinance for source of income discrimination. And I was just wondering, we keep hearing that, that it cannot be enforced. And I guess my question is, and, you know, the natural, I think, conclusion that anyone withdraw is that it's not being enforced. But, but I guess my question here is, do we know that? Is, is Atlanta not enforcing the ordinance that, that they have, they've passed?
Ms., Mr. Newton, I'll restate, so again, in speaking with my counterpart in Atlanta, they have an ordinance, they passed it, it is not enforceable. So they cannot, they are not enforcing this ordinance.
So, so if someone, just so I'm clear on this, what you're saying is that if someone were to violate their ordinance, they take no action?
That is correct. They cannot enforce the, the ordinance that they have based on source of income. Like us, they can investigate fair housing complaints based on race, you know, familial status, all the other things that Mr. Ratsford pointed out earlier, but they cannot enforce the ordinance that they passed related to source of income. It is not enforceable, and they are not enforcing it.
They are not, yes, because there is a difference, right? And, and I guess that's, you know, that's the point of my question. There's a distinction between the idea of cannot and, and are not. And so what you're saying is they are not. So if someone were to violate their ordinance, they take no action?
That is-
Oh, you're saying that's the case?
That is the case. That, that is what I was told by their, my colleague there.
Okay. Okay. And, and I'll just conclude by saying that, that I'm in support of this going back to the, to the committee. It sounds like, we've had a very robust conversation here with a lot of very productive input, and, and I feel like the committee has work left to be done on this. So, so I'm in support of that. And thank you, everybody, for your patience and, and allowing me to call in.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Graham. We're gonna wrap this up.
And go back to the agenda.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment? I promise I'll be brief.
I don't know, oh, Mayor Protem. As long as she, you have not, so please do.
I, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of what my colleagues have said, because it's very clear we feel very passionate about this, that there's room, there is a lot of room for improvement here. I just anecdotally, I'm on the board of the relatives, and we have had a lot of great success in housing our young people in scattered site housing, and that is because the organization has worked with those landlords. So, you know, when I looked at the data that Pam presented, what, what really struck me is that 30, anywhere from 35 to 40% of landlords aren't even taking vouchers. So that's a big chunk of landlords that we should, through this committee or through whatever, you know, the CRC, should start working with those organizations to counter what Ms. Johnson is saying are some stigmas that have been around for a long time, and maybe in some cases are true. There's nothing, you know, you're never going to get a, a, a perfect group that, you know, you can debunk that. But the bottom line is, we could be doing a lot of work with the landlords in this community when such a large percentage of them don't even entertain somebody, the application for somebody with a voucher. That's probably why there aren't a lot of complaints, because what are you going to complain if somebody wouldn't even talk to you about renting? And I like, I, I think it could go back to committee, but to dig deeper into that kind of work, I just have felt strongly that if we can't enforce an ordinance, I think it's unfair to people to pass an ordinance that has absolutely no enforcement power. I think it's misleading and, and leads them down a, a long road that's already been pretty difficult. So I hope that we can dig in deeper on this and make some improvements with some of the work we've talked about. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We certainly had a, an interesting and a robust discussion, and I think we can all agree that, and I don't, I don't speak for any council member, but I think I can do so in this case, that, that we, we are, discrimination in any form is unacceptable in our community, period. I think we all agree upon that. I think we all, based on the information that we presented, understand- I think we all, based on the information that we presented, understand the complexity of, of doing the ordinance. Um, but again, these were only recommendations, and that's why we were able to, uh, I felt it was really important to provide, uh, a meaningful, um, outline of information that staff presented today, and the recommendation. We can always amend, uh, the timeline from 18 to 24 months. A, a lot of the work that I'm hearing that the committee is supposed to be doing, which is a lot of work, um, our goal was that the, the ad hoc committee would do some of that. That was the purpose for, for the committee, that the committee would really do a deep dive. Um, a lot of the strategies that were outlined by many of the council members, um, will take some time. It will take 18 months, it will take 12 months, we probably can shorten that bit. Certainly, there's no microwave solutions to some of the issues that were brought forth to, um, today. Uh, and so I, you know, Mrs. White, how, how long can you think, can we cut it back?
Uh, uh, I mean, y, y, we will work very, very diligently, Mr. Graham, yes, to, to, to cut it back. I, I will say, it would be even more helpful in cutting it back if we could have this ad hoc group do a lot of the work for us, with us, not for us, but with us. We, we really need a collaborative, a democratic approach to developing some of these solutions and to understanding the problem to, to increase the acceptance of vouchers. And Olivia has done wonderful work. We need their voice at the table. We need landlords, we need residents at the table. Um, so we, I think we will be more successful in cutting it back if we can have a committee or advisory group help us do this work.
So, I, I, I guess, Madam Mayor, I hear your, your recommendation, and I agree wi, with it, to send it back to the committee. Um, but that doesn't prevent us from moving forward tonight with the ad hoc committee, if there's consensus.
All right, my second, and my understanding...
That wasn't a motion yet, I'm just...
That was a motion. I, I understand that. So, what this is, what this was, was the action preview before something goes on the agenda.
Okay.
It actually turned out to be the kind of debate we should have had on an actual recommendation, formal recommendation, it was a preview. If you, I do not see that there is any reason not to come back with a committee at the next council meeting, because this would have been on the next agenda, Ms. White.
If that's your pleasure, yes, ma'am. We put, we put this, we wanted to hear your, your, your feedback, just this tonight, we would take that, and we would put it on, I think it's your February 22nd agenda for approval. What I'm hearing tonight is you all want to decrease, decrease that time, we will certainly can, can shore up our recommendations, um, to do that, but that, that would be the next step.
So, Mr. Graham, would it be appropriate to go ahead and continue what you had planned to do tonight, which is bring it to the next council agenda as taking in consideration, but also, I really think this needs some, um, I, I, I wrote down a lot of these questions...
I, I wrote down a lot of things too, so I, I, I concur with that, and I really would like to, to reach out to Councilmember Wallington and see if we can kind of put our heads together, as well as all the committee members, um, of the Great Neighborhoods Committee, but, um, I think there may be some synergy on some of the things in terms of, of a path forward, so I, I will give you a call tomorrow. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, we, just as a reminder, we have our Great Neighborhoods Committee on the 17th, which would be before the 22nd, if we wanted to continue with that.
So I think...
Your call.
The chair can work with the committee and, and, and figure out what that would be, but I, my suggestion would be that you not stop, because there is a sense of urgency about doing something. Put something on the 22nd, if the committee can work together, if the chair and the, and the members can figure this out and get something out early, that's always better. But, or if it's only like, we need this group to help us do the business case, but please give us some sense of direction, we're going to do a business case, or we're not. We're going to get something done. I just, I, I think you just need to know we, what we're going to do, if, what we're trying to accomplish, even with the ad hoc committee. So, with that, um, this...
Madam Mayor.
No, I... No, everyone has spoken, everyone. It is, we have spent over, well, as I said, we've spent a great deal of good discussion around it, and so, right now, I think that we take it to the committee, if the committee members want to have additional discussion about any of these topics, but I wanted to say the proceeding towards the February 22nd agenda is appropriate. All right, with that, let's go to our consent items, except I have to read a, well, let's go to consent items. All right. The first item that we have for comment is item number 23, and deferral of item 22, but I'm going to ask Ms. Harris to address the questions, or if there are additional questions on the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council as well. So, uh, as you mentioned, Mr. Winston would like, um, comment on 23. Also, Ms. Watlington wanted to have some clarify, clarifications discussed on item 23. Ms. Watlington also wanted, um, it expressed publicly again about how the in-living bonds that are on your consent item as 30, 31, and 32, just to clarify again, that these are on consent, because they do not obligate the city financially, it's IRS requirement that in-living get, um, bond approval through us, so that it's more, um, that type of formal approval authority versus...
It's a tax issue, not a financial issue for the city.
Right.
Ms. Watlington, do you want to have a comment on that item? Those three?
No, ma'am, I just wanted, uh, that clarification on it for the public, I appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Are there any other items for the discussion, Ms. Harris?
Not unless council has additional ones beyond 23.
Is there anyone that has an item that they would like to see, um, voted on separately? Is there anyone that would like to make a comment about any one item? All right, with that...
Um, yes, I'm sorry, there was one for item 23.
Yes, we, I, we, we have that one already.
Oh, I'm sorry, I must have missed it.
So, um, so may I have a motion for item 24 through item 34, with the exception of 37? Uh, wait a minute, is it a motion for...
Second.
But which one, for the staff?
27.
27?
37.
37, for, with the exception. So I have a motion, and, um...
Sorry, Mayor, just to clarify, so that would be a motion for 23 through 41, with the exception of 37.
Oh, 24 through 30, wait a minute.
I just want to comment on 23.
It's not a separate vote for 23.
It's not a separate vote for 23? I thought Ms. Watlington and Mr. Winston wanted to comment on it, but you're okay with it?
I just wanted to comment, we don't need a separate vote.
All right, Ms. Watlington, is that your, are you agreeable with that?
Yes.
All right, so we do have a motion for item 23, items 23 through 41, with the exception of item 37. So, ma, do I have a motion?
Moved.
And do I have a second?
Second, Newton.
All right, so with that, um, we'll start the most, roll call vote. Ms. John, um, Ms. Johnson?
I think you start comment before the vote.
I'm sorry. The comments, oh, yes. All right, before we start the vote, discussion and comments. All right, Mr. Winston, followed by Ms. Watlington.
I, I just wanted to, uh, point out, uh, uh, number 23, the Safe Charlotte Professional Consulting Services, um, you know, somebody's, Mr. I think, U. J. Um, thank you. Uh, the, the Safe Charlotte Professional Concern, Consulting Services starts, um, uh, the transition from responding to some emergency calls, um, uh, with civilian response, professional, um, response, as opposed from law enforcement response. I think this is a great, um, a great, um, step for us to continue to take. My question for staff, and I, I, Ms. Harris should be, uh, I, I sent this to you over the weekend, um, how is RAND Corporation going to engage council and the community so that we do have vision, um, and are able to give feedback, um, to this transition from law enforcement, uh, to non-sworn duty, um, responses?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Winston. So, part of this has already started to take place. Even before we did the RFP, we sent out, um, with that community engagement group, the same group that was used for the Safe Charlotte initiatives to begin with, scopes, so draft scopes, we worked with that committee on. Part of their RAND program includes 25 to 35 interviews, and some of these are with the, with the, um, stakeholder groups, but also, they're going to look at specific individuals in the community. We're work, we have that Safe Charlotte website, which is charlottenc.gov/safcharlotte. Right now, it's just populated with actual report recommendations, but we're going to fully flesh that out with progress and links to information on that as well. Um, they're working, uh, the staff's working on a tool to kind of gauge how we're doing, what are their, um, ongoing concerns, and how are we doing with the Safe Charlotte initiatives? So there's several things in place, but that RAND is definitely going to be reaching out and working with stakeholders and continue, I think, in two weeks from now or so, they have another follow-up meeting, um, the internal group with the community input group, so they're going to stay engaged throughout the process as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Ms. Watlington?
I'm good now, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion, um, and a second, Ms. Johnson?
Um, I also have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't, I did not see that. Ms. Johnson?
I wanted to know if this, um, if this, if cure, if cure violence contract is also a part of this.
No, ma'am, this contract before you tonight is separate and apart from that. Of course, they all dovetail and try to work together for violence prevention, but this is a totally separate initiative. This contract tonight is more so focused on three of your specific Safe Charlotte recommendations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, then I.
Anyone else? All right, all right, Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yep.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item 7, a public hearing on a resolution to close an alleyway off Royal Court, parallel to East Morehead Street. There are no speakers sign up, do I have a motion to open and close?
Second, Driggs.
All right, thank you. Ms. John, any discussion of the motion? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
All right, then first, the next item on our agenda is item number eight, adopt a hospitality revenue capital investment program to be used for prioritization of hospitality revenue supported capital investments, and authorize the city manager to make administrative updates as needed consistent with the policy.
Motion to adopt and authorize.
Mr. Eggleston, thank you for the motion.
Second, Driggs.
Mr. Driggs, I appreciate that. Any discussion of the motion? Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
All right. Item number nine, approve the Great Neighborhoods Committee recommendation to approve and begin implementation of the revised Legacy Commission recommendations. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, and I have a comment, when we get a second.
All right, I have a second by Mr. Driggs, and a motion by Mr. Eggleston. Um, the discussion will begin with Mr. Eggleston.
Um, I just wanted to, in case, hopefully all of you saw it, it was sent to all of us via email today, um, from Marie Harris, but I wanted to make sure that the public knew. One of the, the things that had been brought to our attention as a concern, um, I think there's generally agreement around the direction this moves us in, in terms of, um, not doing things in our community that honor, uh, the legacy of people who were leaders of the Confederacy or white supremacists. Um, it doesn't mean we are erasing that history, it doesn't mean we don't teach that history, it simply means we don't honor, um, those folks in, in the ways that they have been honored, um, up till now. But I, one of the things that I had heard from constituents who are residents or business owners on some of the streets, um, that would be part of the recommendation for the changes, was a concern around, um, the impacts to them in regards to changes that they'll have to make with the postal service, with their, with the utilities, um, for their bills, things of that nature. So, I'll, I'll quickly read a short note, uh, that Marie sent us, just so that the community knows. Um, "The city has a cross-departmental work group to implement the street name changes recommended by the Legacy Commission. Staff from CDOT, Housing and Neighborhood Services, Economic Development, and Strategy and Budget are working collaboratively to support this effort. Both Housing and Neighborhood Services and Economic Development are reviewing grant opportunities to offset costs for residents and businesses to change street names. Part of the initial pilot will include an assessment of the need for additional funding to complete the project. In addition, the community engagement team within Housing and Neighborhood Services will partner with residents to provide one-on-one support for residents that will likely need a higher level of support in navigating the changes. Staff will also be available to anyone who has questions or needs additional guidelines." So I just wanted to reiterate to, to everybody watching, and everybody who will be impacted by this, uh, we don't want this to be a burden on you. I think there's agreement that it's the right thing to do, uh, but we don't want it to cause hardships for anybody, uh, who lives or works on those streets, and the city has been thoughtful about that to make sure that it does not negatively impact them.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Mr. Winston?
I just wanted to clarify, um, one thing about my no vote during committee. Um, it's simply a, a matter of scheduling. I entered the meeting, um, while I was at work, just before the presentation, didn't hear the presentation, didn't think I could, wanted to vote yes on something, uh, that I was unknowledgeable about. So I do, I have done my homework, uh, since then, and I, I support this whole article.
I was really curious about that, by the way.
Mr. Phipps?
I had a question about the, uh, criteria for naming new streets. I was wondering if our current policy comports with, with these changes, in as much as we have, uh, subdivisions under construction and the streets being named and eventually going to be turned over to the city? I mean, do we, I mean, did we cross-reference our current street naming conventions with this in any way, or how did we sort of reconcile two policies?
Mr. Jones, how did you reconcile those things, or...
Tim, please.
Uh, Ms. Blackwell? Yes.
Hi, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Phipps. So we did, um, in our new process moving forward, we will collaborate with CDOT on new city-owned streets to ensure, to help ensure that we do not, um, run across this path again. In addition, we'll be collaborating with, with the Museum of the New South and Historic Land Commission to also review street names to ensure they are in accordance with the new criteria.
So it's, it is...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Any other questions? Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, I, uh, again, I'll just reiterate, but a, a, a message also for staff that I want to reiterate, um, I plan on supporting this, but I, I very much want you guys and staff to look at and bring us back options for a new policy where we, where we simply don't name anything after people anymore. It's impossible for us to understand with today's lens, um, or, or a future lens, what is happening today, nor anticipate that, and I would just like to save councils in the future, um, any kind of issues alongside that by just, by just stripping that out of our entire playbook altogether.
So the staff has heard that consideration from Mr. Bakari. All right, um, any other comments? All right, hearing no additional comments, I'm going to begin the vote. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Affirmative.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps? Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our, we'll start our business agenda is the adopt and a budget ordinance appropriating 26.7 million from the U.S. Department of Treasury for emergency rental and utility assistance in the General COVID-19 Assistance Fund, and authorize the city manager to execute necessary contracts related to the Emergency Rental and Utility Assistance Program. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Eggleston, Mr. Graham, second. All right, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing no, I'm sorry, I see Mr. Winston put his hand up. Mr. Newton, did I see you put, raise your hand? Okay, Mr. Winston?
I think this is great. I just would like staff, I know I talked to Ms. Wyman, it's probably been a long night at this point in time, but I think it's important that we communicate effectively to our community about how, not just people that need these, this relief during the pandemic, but all taxpayers, for them to understand where their taxpayer dollars are going. We just have to, I think there's a better way to do that, and I think working with corporate communications will figure out how to better communicate the investments that we're making.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Hearing no one else, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Oh, very much so, yes, this is great news.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is to adopt an initial findings resolution and authorize the Chief CFO to make appropriate applications to the local government commission for the issuance of general airport revenue bonds not to exceed $500 million, and the revenue bond anticipation notes not to exceed $300 million. And the next item is adopt a resolution setting a public hearing on February the 22nd for this financing as required by the IRS regulations. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt A and B.
Second, Driggs.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion of this item? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
All right, the next item is to approve the city's business investment grant to Intercontinental Capital Group for not, an amount not to exceed $109,661 over seven years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Eggleston, who seconded it?
Bakari.
Thank you, Mr. Bakari. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
It appears she may have stepped away.
Okay. All right, Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Ms., Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston? Mr., I, I see.
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is item 14, to adopt a resolution approving the 2020 Charlotte Mecklenburg Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And item B, to invest the Charlotte Mecklenburg Emergency Manage Office with the following tasks: Informing all concerned parties of the action, cooperate with all agencies and private sector required to complete the work, and continue the oversight of the Radiological Emergency Preparedness Program and countywide hazardous materials in the plan. Appoint the Charlotte Mecklenburg Emergency Management Office in collaboration with the city's stormwater planning, design, and development departments to ensure that the Charlotte Mecklenburg Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan is reviewed annually and every five years, ensure compliance.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All right. And who made the second? Mr. Phipps, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Before we go to the nominations, I have a proclamation that I would like to read as, for, to enter into the record today. Whereas volunteers working with young people who are joy and our hope for tomorrow are exuberant representatives of the potential to be reached and dreams to come true, that they are unbounded in their enthusiasm to use their talent, skills, and hard work to make a difference. Whereas members of the Optimist International will celebrate Optimist Day throughout the world on the first Thursday of every February to promote their efforts in helping and recognizing young people making a difference. Whereas there are 2,400 Optimist Clubs with over 70,000 members and Optimist International and Optimist members throughout the world that carry out more than 6,500 service projects a year. Now therefore, I by Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, proclaim the first Thursday of every February as Optimist Day in Charlotte and commend its observance to all citizens. I believe this belongs to Mr. Phipps.
Thank you, ma'am. I was surprised, I thought I had passed that deadline. But on behalf of Hidden Valley Optimist Club, where I serve as president in all the Optimist Clubs in North Carolina, West, and domestically and abroad, I certainly thank you for recognizing February 4th as Optimist Day worldwide.
Mr. Phipps, we so much appreciate the work that you do for the club and all of the work that all of the Optimist members do. So with that, we have nominations for tonight, and I'm going to, the council will consider nominations to various boards and commissions. The members of the council submitted their nominations earlier to the clerk. The names of the nominees will not be read tonight. Tomorrow, the clerk emails everyone and lets them know the names of the applicants that have received at least two nominations. These candidates will be considered at the next business meeting, February the 22nd. Any applicant receiving six or more votes can be considered for appointment tonight upon a motion. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to the clerk to determine if there are any for each of the, first one beginning with the Business Advisory Committee.
Yes, ma'am, mayor, there are several boards that did receive more than six nominations. And at the conclusion, if I could get a motion to approve all of those, then we will only bring back those that did not receive six or more votes. So for the Business Advisory Committee, the one appointment for a three-year term, the incumbent, the Miko Faulkner, received 10 nominations. For the two appointments for the three-year term recommended by the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance, the incumbents Lindsay Brasali and McLean Godfrey received both 11 nominations. For the Charlotte Business Inclusion Advisory Committee, the incumbent Jamal Cook received 10 nominations. For the one two-year appointment for at-large for a prime construction company, China Green, the incumbent, received 10 nominations. For the one appointment recommended by the Black Chamber of Commerce, Harrison Williams received 11 nominations. For, also for the Charlotte Business Inclusion, there were no recommendations received for the Latin American Chamber of Commerce. However, the National Association of Businesswomen Owners, the incumbent Nicole Reiner, received 11 nominations. For the Community Relations Committee, Paul Lawrence received nine nominations. As did Kelly Ciallo, received nine nominations. For Neighborhood Matching Grants, Jamal Cook received 11 nominations. For the Neighborhood Representative, Diane Legavin, received, the incumbent, received 10 nominations. And Rhonda Dean, for a nonprofit sector representative, received 11 nominations. For the Privatization Competition Advisory Committee, Tara Bright and Eric Cohen both received, both received 11 nominations. Ken May received 10, as did Angela Shealy, and the incumbent, Angela Shealy. And Owen Zukowski received, received nine nominations. For the Transit Services Advisory Committee, Samuel Grudman received 10 nominations. For the one, for the three-year term in the Neighborhood Organizational Leader category. For the Suburban Employer, served by Charlotte Transit, the incumbent Leroy Fields received 11 nominations. For the Zoning Board of Adjustment, two appointments for three-year terms. The incumbents Eric Sanderson received 11 nominations, and Douglas Wilson received 10 nominations. And those are the nominations received for those specific boards, mayor.
So the historic districts needed more, another needed to do more?
Yes, they will come back.
So that is the-
Motion to appoint all nominees receiving six or more votes?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Eggleston and a second by Mr. Driggs for the nominations. Is there any discussion about this? Hearing no discussions, then the motion will start the voting. Mayor, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, this meeting's adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.